This conference will now be recorded.
All right, well, thank you everyone for coming to our budget work session number three. This one is gonna be primarily focused on two things, but we can talk about whatever questions you have on the budget up, of course. The first thing you wanna get into is the gymnasium, now that we have kind of a rough estimate from the architects from Davis School District. And Cole's here to kinda help us walk through some of that information and then after that, we'll get into some of the personnel questions, wanted to talk about primarily staffing requests, Cole, things like that, so. Oh, perfect. So with that. So, I mean, really, we thought, let's go, kinda take a step back here, remember why we got into this discussion? History wise, we all are aware that back in 2010, we had the opportunity to partner with the school district for a gymnasium at Centennial. It was a lot less, two million back then, now it's ten point five. And I'll say, when we were told ten point five by the architects, they were clear that that's an estimate. Ten point five plus or minus ten percent and it hopefully will only go down from there, but I think they're trying to be conservative. So who knows how much that might come down? But again, we wanted to kinda take a high level look at what's driving this in the first place. We did that survey a few years ago, Y2 Analytics, and there was just a high level of interest among residents for a recreational facility, but I'm gonna let Cole walk through some of this stuff.
Yeah, so this was the survey that we did in conjunction back in 2021, when we were doing our parks recreation master plan. The city was also going through their master plan and the city had a kind of a land use component that they had on the front of this survey. And the survey was given to Y2 Analytics, just to break it up, so I don't know sure how many were on council back then. The Y2 K Analytics brought, broke the city up into four quadrants. It was a randomized survey that was sent out to a certain, a certain number of people within each one of those quadrants within the city, northeast, southwest, kinda deal. And so they kept going with this survey until they got enough responses to make it a statistically valid survey. This is also the same survey that asked the question about ramp. This slide is in there for ramp, ramp was supported either very or somewhat by the tune at sixty-four percent. When it went to vote, it was voted it and passed at a seventy-one percent of margin. And so I think it just gives the data to the survey question and that is a survey question. Now there's, you can argue that the recreation center versus gymnasium are not necessarily the exact same components, but the gymnasium does have components that do constitute a recreation center. So this just shows you the survey question.
So, and poll of interest.
Do we know, I'm sorry, I apologize. You know, part of that rec center, 'cause I remember sitting in a couple meetings, you know, the first couple months after we came on council with folks. Big part of that is a swimming pool.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, if you were to look at it, if you were to say of those seventy-one percent, eighty-nine percent of it would be.
Yeah, there's the next slide.
Oh, okay, sorry, okay.
What the percentage was of those, when they, when that question was asked, what is it that you value in a recreation center? So, of course, pool, now a pool takes you to a completely different realm of funding operations. They don't make money, they're very heavily subsidized by general tax dollars. But if you go down to the next, the next questions or the next ones below that, then that is where you hit all the things that potential gymnasium would bring to the city. As far as cardio, you think about track, indoor track, pickleball courts, group fitness classes, basketball courts.
We'll have a pickleball lizard twenty twenty-one.
Exactly, and so as far as the gymnasium, the gymnasium would hit those, those middle cores pretty, pretty solidly. And of course, as it goes down through it, it's in the, you know, there's interest in a firearms range, which was, was interesting. So this just gives us some data points to show that there is a level of interest in, in that. And so these are the details of the gym, these images are came from the school district on, I believe is the top one, is that the?
West Point.
That's West Point, brand new one, that will open in the fall of this year, fall of twenty-five. The bottom one is, is that West Point as well?
Yes.
Yeah, so they, last image I saw didn't have before, but that, that's kind of the, the model that we would have. Our portion of that is the, basically split in half is a twenty-six thousand square feet. And that's, that's the number that the architects are giving us as far as, when you deal with architect engineers, it's always on the high side. So the hope is, once they bring in a CNBC, that those costs will start to come down, is able to build in opportunities and things like that. The biggest thing that the district is needing from us is a, not necessarily figure out all the funding, but a commitment that we were either in or were out. Because back in twenty-ten, the district went all the way a couple weeks before going out to bid and the city council pulled out. So the district had to go back then and redesign, re-engineer, which cost the district a lot of money.
Our city council, we.
Our city council time.
Yeah.
And Gil Miller, I don't remember if you recall, a few years ago, their presentation. I think he emailed and Michelle Barber read a letter, but that's one of his regrets, is that he didn't act upon that, not thinking maybe far enough ahead.
Like a million bucks at the time, though.
Yeah, one, one to two million, but yeah, I mean, but you can see where time is, things have increased, so. And I'm not arguing, ten point twenty is a big number, there's no, I get it, it's a.
It's a scary number.
It's, it's a scary. It's a big number, I get it, I'm not arguing that at all, 'cause I, it was disappointing to me to have him say that as well, so. And so we'll just go through and show this is kind of what the district is proposing currently, how it would be a standalone facility. They call it the Kaysville Gym, be split between Kaysville, Junior High and the Kaysville City. And so this chart just kinda shows you what they currently do, some schematics, a lot of it similar to what Horizon Junior High is. But the, the green portions, when you do the math on certain things, the green portions are the things that Kaysville City funds at a hundred percent. I mean, we, we bear the cost of those items in green. Everything in yellow is the items that the school district bears one hundred percent of the cost. And then the gray items, the two different colors are gray, those are things that are shared, kind of a fifty-fifty. Because, you know, you got the heating including in the building, that's, you know, it's not just a school, it's also the city for that, that kinda stuff.
Are you talking about this maintenance, this isn't building it?
No, this is also the construction cost.
That's construction.
When they come to the cost of how the cost is broken down.
So does that mean that the school district would not be able to use the green?
So if this, if we did not partner with the school district, the school district is not going to construct the green. And that's where, right now, in the infancy of the design, that's why there's kind of a need to know, is the city in or is the city out? Because as they go, there's a lot that goes into engineering and designing a building, structural and all those things. And if all of a sudden at the last minute, like what happened in Centennial, city council pulls out at the, the last minute, they are ready to go to bid, they had it all designed, there was a lot of heartburn on the district's part because, like, the city let them along all the way and then at the very end, okay, we're out. And I don't know all the details as to why that happened, other than at the time, it was, you know, money related.
So, quick question, so like in the evening or on the weekend when the school's not using any of the space, do we have access to all of it?
We have access to the whole space.
Okay, so then the green aspect of it, what about maintenance?
So that, there is ongoing maintenance as far as resurfacing the gym. We've spoken, Layton City, it's about four thousand dollars a year for the resurfacing.
Well, the school district needs to do stuff, they'll just do the whole thing and then send us a bill.
Yes, yeah, yeah, so the district will oversee all the management, operations and maintenance of it. And that's where those costs for us, they manage to operate the building, we do have some costs on an annual basis, others outside of the construction. What's, but just routine maintenance, HVAC, things like that.
Well, schools in session know public can use it at all.
Yeah, because.
So it's like trying to think about like, you know, the older people walking around that track in the winter would be awesome, but most of them are gonna wanna walk around at morning or ten in the morning or something.
Yeah, I think we just have to think outside the box when we think that, and the reason why people can't be in there is because when you go into a school, everybody that's in the school on, during school has to have a background check.
Yeah.
If you go to, if you go to check out your kids right now.
People were, this is a standalone building?
Because, because PE, because PE classes will be in there, it, it, all their, the current physical education classes are moving from the current building, they would be in this building.
There would be standalone, though.
It will be a standalone building, but there will be PE classes.
You're on school ground.
You're on school grounds, and so, yes, so that is, you know, a drawback, is that during the school hours, but every evening and all day Saturdays.
Or Sundays, all day Sunday, too?
Sundays, yeah, Sundays too, yes. The weekends and evenings are the cities, and then during the summer months, that changes because then, when school's not in session, we have the ability to program it during the summer months.
So who pays to like, 'cause on a Saturday or Sunday or after school or whatever, who pays to like have, doesn't there have to be somebody there, it's like a.
Yeah, and so that, that would be our part-time staff that we currently have.
Oh.
And all of our programming would fund those positions. So, you know, if we're running in a, say we're running an adult volleyball league, you know, it's gonna run on evenings. The participants that pay for that volleyball league, our part-time staff's salary or wages are included in those registration fees. And so we have revenue that pays for it, so we're not proposing any, you know, additional full-time staff. We would have to have additional part-time staff, that's not, no benefits, just.
So they'd be paid for by the program.
For city council members.
But then, but then like, when you're saying like on a Sunday, there's probably not a volleyball crew happening, but maybe people wanna go over there and walk up and try to play basketball, how do you do that with the staff?
Yeah, so if we have no gym. We would have to have a, we would have to have a, a site supervisor there.
Well, at all times.
If the building's open, yes.
Ever your hours are.
Also, it could be like Chick-fil-A.
In that case, then, would somebody have to have membership?
That's something.
'Cause see, that's, that's another different cost, if you're gonna do memberships to have.
I don't, we're not proposing a membership, so.
Any, any citizen can go in there from Kaysville.
Could we do a key card kinda thing, like some of the, like the yoga places, you just put a pin pad key number in and you can use it.
Goals.
It's twenty-four seventy, it doesn't have to be state stuff.
Those are things that we would.
I think you, the vandalism, the vandalism.
The vandalism is what we do.
I mean, for adults.
Uh, but how do you, how do you?
How do you know that it's gonna be an adult?
So our, our comfort level, you.
It's just like, it's just take center all the time.
Even when we ran out our little, really over here, when we have a, a user that comes in, we have a site, we have a site supervisor.
So, so people are working, using the track early morning, we just have a volunteer there from.
We have, yeah.
Ten or whatever.
Probably, yeah, probably seven, 'cause school starts at.
I mean, in the summer.
In the summer months, yeah, yeah, and so we would program that, and then, I met with my staff today and over the weekend, we've been just throwing out all the possibilities of programming, because we want to view this as not just a gymnasium. Because I think that's short sighted, we're viewing this more as a, as a recreation center without a swimming pool and things like that. So this just shows you the funding breakdown, like who, who pays for what. But the city has, when it's our time, we have the use of the entire facility, except for the locker rooms, we don't want anything to do with the.
But we give, give both rec rooms, right?
Yes.
Okay, so we give them two classes.
Yeah, I think you could go to the next, it shows you.
So you said, so the locker rooms would just be off limits, they would be locked?
They'd be locked, we would have public restrooms that all the patrons could use or not, changing locker rooms.
Okay.
Just because.
We needed a.
Well, it's a whole, a whole different level of, of security in my mind, just.
And we don't want access to the locker rooms.
Yeah.
And things like that, so.
So what are these, there's all, there's all of our.
So that's a mechanical.
Okay, and then.
Mechanical lobby hallway.
Outdoor something.
Can you see that?
That, that's the outdoor access.
No, I zoomed in really hard today.
I was gonna say pregnancy heights.
Okay, so I have a question. What, do you think the school district would go for it if we said, look, we're kind of in, but we wanna know if we can get a GO bond, and if we back out at the last second, we'll pay for the engineering costs?
No.
No.
Well, and.
Well, I, if, if I'm building a, it's a good question, but if I'm building a building, I'm not gonna do that, because if this is a, say this is a twenty-five million dollar building, the engineering costs are gonna be about ten percent of that, so you're looking at, so you're willing to pay two point five million to get nothing.
Inside of this is that the land swap idea with an amphitheater, so really, we look at this thinking, we could potentially get an amphitheater also as a.
That's, that's, that's coming down.
Okay, okay.
So, they're not, they're not prepared to, to do anything with that right now.
But, but, but that's really what they wanna do.
Well, that's, that's, what I was gonna mean, my thought is, I don't, I mean, I don't know if this even happens, but to sit down with Michelle and them and say, gosh, would you guys do sixty, forty? Like this is a benefit to the community, it's gonna be benefit to you type of thing.
Yeah, but they, they haven't done that with any other city, so.
So all this is start, I mean, you don't, you don't get.
I'm, I'm just saying, that's when we have meetings with them, there's like.
You've asked. But I don't see how.
We have to trade fifty, fifty, I don't see that. 'Cause, 'cause it's not fifty, the school district's paying a lot more than fifty percent.
Yeah, if you say if it's a twenty-five million dollar project and they're, and they're asking us to do ten point five.
Well, maximum, maximum, we're.
Well, no, but, now, now.
I'm guessing, the twenty-five million dollars.
You own the defense contracting business, you understand there's nothing that ever comes in lower.
The twenty, the twenty-five million is just, is just my, that's, that's me, they, they haven't quoted that.
Okay.
All they've quoted that is our square footage, but when you go and do the math on some of the other areas.
It's a pipe.
You, you start to get more, they're on the, they're funding about sixty percent of the building, and we're probably forty percent of the building.
So a quick question, will the school use the track above square, even though it's not very wide?
Yeah. They, they use it for their PE classes.
Well, the, one of the, at least four lanes, four pipelines.
Okay.
Planes, four planes.
Yeah, we, we have some pictures, you.
Next slide.
West Point under construction.
So where is the track?
It sits up here.
Up here, right there.
It sits up here, right there.
So it's behind the.
Is that sort of what it's in, or is that? Uh, I think it's for.
These are.
There's another picture that'll show.
It's a better picture.
It's supposed to be. If you go back to the other one, uh, you know, when we have previous at the floor in it, right here.
You can see the tracks right up here.
Oh, okay, all right.
Sorry, I have.
There's another, yeah, rendering that, that's legacy, there's another one at West Point, isn't there?
Oh, yes.
That track isn't very large.
This is, is that Shoreline?
That's.
This is Shoreline.
That's Shoreline.
That almost looks like a Hillary Force basis.
And we, when we call it a track, it's not a track that you're gonna do, go out and have a high school track meet on.
You're not having an indoor race on it.
You know, you're gonna have people out there that are gonna, some are gonna walk, lots of them are gonna be walkers, um, all the strollers, things like that.
They're gonna walk in the running lane.
That lower left picture. So that lower left picture, it looks like there's cardio equipment. Why would we not entertain the thought of having some cardio equipment, just to, 'cause I feel like.
We certainly could.
It's hard to like swallow this ten million dollar pill without having a little more to get through.
We, we certainly, certainly could.
But then you're talking, that equipment's expensive.
And those are things, those are things that you could add.
Like I think with the design, if, if it will be wide enough, with areas like that.
If you go back to that.
If you ask, talk about. For its design.
Yeah.
Uh, you don't have the one that shows the second level, do you?
No, I don't.
So there's a second level, when you, when you look at how this comes out right here, this is gonna be the roof line, so it's kind of a slant. So on the second level above this space, there's what they call a, a fitness yoga room, which is a room that's twenty-eight hundred square feet, has, it'll have a spongy floor. That's a room that can use for fitness classes, yoga classes, things like that. But if you look at their design, they do have some areas that they have, they do have some exercise equipment.
Where you're facing out to the window or whatever.
Yeah, your mom's strollers can get out of your way.
Yeah.
To me, I'm more inclined to support it if we, because when I saw the yoga room, that made me very happy to see that, because it's hard to justify, you know, an evening gym, weekend gym, and there's a lot of that.
There's this yogurt.
On the second floor.
It's on the second floor.
Do you have it on yours?
Yeah, I didn't even have it.
I have it on mine.
Sorry.
No, it's all.
You just emailed.
It should be in that file Jason sent.
You know, the, the thing I see about this though is it's so, you can't say this, but it's just, it's, everybody pays, but so few get to use it. I mean, everybody could use it, I guess, if they were available or could go or whatever, but you're talking about something that, what I've seen is a walking track and some basketball court.
I think though, the, the only thing I'll contrast to that, Mike, is that I've, like, talking to a kid the other day, at an R U thing, and I'm like, so what sport do you, what, you know, what are you playing now, and he's like, oh, I'm doing soccer. And then he said, I'm, I'm also playing basketball, I'm like, oh, are you on a rec team, he's like, no, Justin's doing Kaysville's.
Right, should have it anywhere.
You know what I mean, and so, like, I think that there's more volley, more volleyball, more, so, more like athletic things
So is.
that the city provides that will actually be used.
So Jason's, Jason's sending that, but I have my staff today create a little video, it's like a minute forty-five of just things of thinking outside the, the box. But I'll show you the second level if that comes through.
Do you wanna me show the video first?
Um, yeah, show the, you show the video, okay.
Okay, I, that'll ask a question.
More, it'll be, it'll be used more.
So Cole, while that comes, oh, nevermind, I'll wait till the video.
What?
The, oh.
We're gonna have more time, we're gonna have added some audio, but.
Is there audio?
No.
Just sing it in your head.
Kaysville theme song?
So, so this is what we currently do, and then this, the idea is, this is what we will, what we could do. But we currently don't have the ability to even offer, because we don't have.
So we don't have any.
We, we don't have any space, we don't have any adult basketball.
We have junior jazz, though, right?
But we don't have anything adult, you know, it's not junior jazz.
Okay, okay.
And that's different than cross?
Yes.
Okay.
We don't have any adult or youth volleyball.
Which fits life, yeah.
Now, now, now that the high, now that the high school has sanctioned boys volleyball, now that boys, boys and, boys and girls, you know. Field hockey, which is big.
Wait, wait, boys play field hockey?
But in, the, the Utah Mammoth now have a, a push to create field hockey, 'cause field hockey leads into ice hockey.
Well, they pay for it, then.
I'm just saying, it's, it's a, it's a sport that, that, it's like lacrosse.
Can we ask them?
That's really good.
We're a gym, they'll, if we wanna put an ice cream, they'll give us five hundred thousand.
That's it?
You know what, sometimes when I forward these to my phone, like, it snags it, like it's spam.
So as, as I met with him, I just said, when you think outside the box of all the things that we currently don't have the opportunity to, to offer, because I think when we, when we program for recreation, I think we miss a whole segment of our population that could benefit from recreation opportunities. If you look at what recreation provides this society, you know, we talk about health and wellness benefits, we talk about, you know, revives crime, all these things for the, for the adolescents and the youth, but we don't do a very good job of providing adult programming once you get outside of high school, other than we do offer adult. So these are just things that, you know, right out the door are things that could be offered. We used to have a men's basketball league, but we had to cancel that because we continually getting limited space in the high schools, huge gymnasiums, because they have more activities that require more usage of their, of their space. And so these are just ideas as we start thinking about what could be, this is what could be.
Will this save us any money potentially not having to rent other gym spaces from the school district, or not really?
Well, with our inner local, we don't have a, we don't necessarily have a rental.
Okay.
What we're bound by is availability. And when they have more programs and more things, our availability continues to shrink. And that's why, like our men's basketball, we cut because we were squeezed, squeezed, squeezed out. We also have huge wait lists on our junior jazz programs and other things that, you know, that we don't have enough space, so we have to limit the amount of teams we can have participate, because we don't have X amount of, of team space. That's just specifically on basketball. The objective is to, huge, there's many people in the, in Kaysville, you know, we currently with our recreation program, we get about thirteen thousand participants in our recreation programming. And that's just, that's pretty much just youth, there is some adult with our.
Thirteen thousand.
Thirteen thousand.
So Cole, let me ask, other cities that have gone in with the school district and have participated, are the, how, do we know how many of them there are?
So Layton City has done it three times, they have three junior highs that they partner with, Shoreline Legacy and Central Davis.
Okay.
West Point has a, currently done a, Farmington made the decision to do it on their own, back in, they built their own gymnasium. I think back then it costs, if we did the square footage costs on what Farmington, forty, I think it's forty-nine thousand square feet of what they built, it would be about twenty, twenty-one million dollars to build that.
I think there was six million to build it when they did it, and they're paying it off, they paid it off this year.
Yeah, so.
So my question, my question is, what do we, the track record of these cities of keeping it fully occupied in the evenings, do we, do we know what programs that they have done or are, I guess are doing?
Yeah, so Layton City says that they, they could do more, but my argument.
Anybody could do more.
Anybody could do more, and I think that's on staff to provide opportunities to do more.
Have up staff to do it, though, we're always talking about staff.
But you gotta look at recreation a little bit differently, too, because we can do a lot of stuff with recreation when it comes to part-time staff. We don't struggle getting part-time staff, site supervisors that wanna make a couple extra bucks throughout the week to come and just.
Non, non-benefited.
Non-benefited, they're just, they're classified as temporary.
Yeah, they're just happy to pay eighteen dollars an hour.
The program covers the, and the program covers the costs of those, so any increase in the budget, in a recreation budget, we have a revenue side that correlates. So currently, how our recreation is funded, a hundred percent of all program, of program revenue pays for a hundred percent of our, well, not quite a hundred percent, but almost all of our part-time wages. The only, the only thing that's exempt on a recreation side is my full-time staff and then the benefits, it's exempted. But everything, all the program fees cover the costs of scorekeeper, site supervisors, referees, things like that. This is the second level. And so you see.
You see the track, yeah.
See, the track goes here, and they have a design already with, you know, those options to do cardio.
With, yeah.
Yeah, if, those are things that the city would choose to add. And so the green again just shows you the funding, like the city pays for that half, it's really true. And this is the fitness, which is a twenty-eight hundred, a square foot room that can be used for, you know what, I mean, that's, that's the.
Pyquon, Pyquon.
Hey.
Yeah.
Money gods, money panel? Yeah, are you gonna tell us, so Gobon, how much it would be yearly and how much could be paid through the ramp?
Yeah, coming up.
Yeah, I think our, our recommendation would be.
We can't get a.
I was speaking first, right?
Oh, I didn't mean to say Gobon, I just said ball, I meant say just ball.
Okay.
Sales tax.
Sales tax, or be. We call those, that's R O D.
Quick question about the rooms, for yoga, how many rooms?
So there's one big room, it's a twenty-eight hundred square foot room, so.
That's, there's only one room?
There's only, there's only one room.
What is the other small thing that says cardio there?
That's, ignore the color, just look at the black line to the sides of the room. That just means that we're going in fifty percent of this funding on that room.
Because the school can use it.
I think they mean on the left where the lobby is.
Oh.
We can't use the other rooms?
What's, what's this?
What's that, what does that say?
Oh, that?
I think it's just open.
Oh.
But can't we use the other room, or is that their locker room, totally?
My guy, I can't recall.
The gray, the gray.
It says mechanical.
It's mechanical, it's a mechanical, mechanical rooms are pretty significant these kinds of buildings, so.
So you're saying there's the yoga room and then there's a room upstairs.
This is, this is.
This is upstairs. Downstairs would be the locker.
Last way. Got it.
So three lane racetrack.
I see the outdoors.
Yeah, I mean, you, you're not, we're not gonna be able to host, we're not envisioning this as being like, oh, this is gonna take care of our track program.
It would be like significantly.
So to go to a GO bond, you'd have to go to a vote, right? But if you wanna go on NBA, you'd have, then you could do it.
Yeah, DO one, record. Sales tax, or every bond would.
Would not.
It's a lot of what West Wing's done.
They did a sales tax.
Yeah, and I, I just, I wanna just throw this out there, too, I, I look at this opportunity for gymnasium is that when I think about Kaysville City and like, we have this plan to revision, you know, what is downtown Kaysville looking like? Now, this may not be in the core of downtown Kaysville, but it is in the heart of Kaysville. It brings people downtown, I mean, it brings people through the thing.
So it's, it's gonna increase traffic.
In relation, yeah, in relation to where the current school is, where would they plot this thing?
So where's.
Yeah.
Oh, is that, yeah, cycling?
I wonder, they're redoing the whole junior high, and this is gonna be part of a new junior high, but they're just building it.
There will be a address. When, when they, whenever they decide to redo the junior high, it'll be a standalone, this will always be a standalone. So, which we like from, from the standpoint that it, it does. So, which we like from, from the standpoint that it, it does become the Kaysville Gymnasium.
So they would build this before they build the junior high?
Yeah, so this is.
For, for the record, the junior high will stay there, we might remodel it, we're not going to.
I think the driving is, they are gonna be some remodel with the existing gymnasium in the space, but, um, they're not.
Ah, I thought.
So, so they're taking it, and then Columbia Elementary still remains over there, so.
So, oh, sorry, Cole.
No, you know where that's at.
Can we ask?
Can we ask for Davis?
Is there the potential at all ever to add a pool onto this, like, is there enough space for that? If we, if there were interested parties in putting in a pool, like.
I'm sure that the discussion that you could have with the, with the school districts at some point, you know, gun and railers. Um, the school district have to buy in on that property.
I'm sure people want it, I'm just asking.
No.
Well, it's fine, I'm asking.
Yes.
Yeah, no.
It'd have to be an indoor pool.
Yeah.
These, these are the four pres for the, wait, um, well, Jason and I talked too. Like somebody about a pool, how much did they say a pool would be, like thirty million?
Well, this is just a lap pool only, right?
Yeah, lap pool was a little swimming area, wasn't it like?
Oh.
Yeah.
I can't remember, it was.
It's a thirty.
I was gonna say thirty.
Thirty, yes, Spanish Fork City just built a full-blown recreation center, indoor lap pool is a full, it was seventy-five million.
Yeah, I mean, it sells.
What would be the cost without a pool?
Would this be registered?
Just rent it our own.
You're still looking at the same, it's based on square footage, so if you're talking a fifty thousand square foot building, you're looking at, you know, twenty million dollars, so. The reason we, this is advantageous, I think it's a fifty, it's not quite fifty-fifty, but if, if you just view it as a fifty-fifty split. Layton City's done it three times, um, there's a reason why they think it works, um, West Point City is doing it on the, uh.
How would it say?
Is that in the South end, has it?
Layton, well, Layton fund is theirs through their ramp.
And that's where farming to lend in there.
Layton, like, can't see the. Yeah, but you gotta keep in mind, Layton City generates two million dollars a year.
Okay, what is, what's, what's West Point doing, they're, they're not.
They're on a thirty-year bond.
They're gonna throw up max parameter, thirty-one year bond.
If we did this, I would almost, I'd almost wanna like see if we could ensure that they.
Well, they're thinking that they're gonna keep going on too, right?
Yeah, I don't know how you do it, but. Whether it's the positioning of the building or how you make it so that it is. And the writing on the wall, you know, something that makes it so it's like this is Kaysville.
Just, just believe, we talked about that a lot.
You know what I mean?
That would be different.
This wall right here is a brick wall, which would be the big lettering, so you're gonna have to modify, and it's gonna be kind of a parking lot.
They say, where's the parking, okay.
Parking's gonna have to come in here and it'll be a circular like drop-off, um, I think the target about a hundred parking stalls, uh, there. I know people don't like to walk, but there's also parking, you know.
And they're linked to brand, this is Kaysville, what are we calling it, Kaysville, yeah, Kaysville, yeah.
I don't wanna walk through June.
The Kaysville Gymnasium.
And that's, I think that's big.
I'm not, this will, but, but yeah, the Kaysville.
They, they make the parking lot, yeah.
Yeah. Because I think this is, that, yeah, if it's lined it that way, it'll just create that, more of that larger feeling of this is a rec center for us.
Yes, the thought.
I reflect about.
School uses it rather than the schools' rec center that we use.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yeah.
The district does.
So the district's ideal timeline of what they want to do is they'd like to start designing it. What you see now is just some schematics, it's not anything that's architectural or, it's architectural, but it's not, um, engineered or ready for construction. They'd like to design, they wanna go to bid in January, cause either month of the better times of bid. Um, it'd be about an eighteen-month deal, um, so we wouldn't have occupancy of it until, uh, fall of twenty-seven. Which is about the time that the first payments would be, um.
The first construction. To the both of the.
Yeah. So back to the, the district is just looking for the city's commitment, are, are we in, are we out? Uh, cause that affects what they, um, what they do.
So Dean, we actually don't bond for this until twenty fiscal year twenty twenty-eight, right?
You could do either way, you could bond now or you could wait and bond later on.
So we bond now, but we don't have to pay for two years, so what do we do, just bank the cash and try to gain some interest on it? Depending on what the rate is that we're.
Yeah, the problem right now with, with bonding is interest rates are so volatile.
Yeah, we just don't know.
Bond interest.
Yeah.
So I think it'd be better to wait to bond, right?
You can refinance it, can you?
Yeah, I mean, you can finance it.
Yeah, but you all pay all.
So the recommendations as far as.
What's the, what's the interest rate difference between a G O bond and a tax?
You wanna see?
Yeah, no, like you used to be, you're probably within twenty basis points.
Oh, that close, okay.
Tell me what that means in what, in layman's terms, one percent, one and a half percent?
One percent is a hundred basis points.
Yeah, so it's like, it's like two, it's like, it's like four point two, it's like four point oh.
Five, five point four.
Yeah, five by five two, five point twenty.
So this slide is the same funding one we had, um, April twenty-eighth, we just updated it with that ten million number. Using five hundred thousand ramp fund, the top box shows what we presented in the tentative budget. Was it a fifteen-year, four percent, six thirty annual payment?
And annually, we'd be pulling five hundred grand out of ramp?
Um, that would be a one-time.
There's a balance.
That's, so that's a down payment, that's the balance.
That's what we wanted.
Yeah.
But what are we proposing annually ramp pays three fifteen?
Half, yes. Yeah, so tentative budget has that half at three fifteen, and then scenario one, if we did another fifteen-year.
So that, that seems awful low though. Uh, I, I'm just not questioning, I mean, would be your six hundred and thirty thousand for a ten million dollar loan, that's what we're saying?
That's seven million.
No, that's, that was the seven, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay, that's the seven million, I was gonna say, that seems really low.
Yes. Sorry, yes, that was the seven million.
Cause they, these are scenario one, right, this is, this is a ten million dollar.
Yeah. Yeah, sorry.
That's the seven.
That was the original.
Put, so put, so put an X through the top.
Yeah, this, this is more.
I think she left it there so you could.
Still seems low.
I, we just wanted to be able to compare it to tentative and, and see how much was changing as far as tax increase or annual payment.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I'm in twenty-five year. I'll, I'll be there, I'm sure by then, but, um, yeah.
We'll be in a while.
So, yeah, so the twenty-five year is.
Yeah, I'll turn it.
Oh, yeah.
Ten thousand more.
Close.
I think we'll be in, in the fifteen year.
And, and the, and how, why, how and why are we decreasing the amount the ramp be paying towards the annual payment? As we go down in years of that service?
How long?
Just because, is that just because we're proposing holding, are we just, is that just because we're proposing half the payment be paid by ramp?
Yes.
Well, I, uh, I, I don't know about you guys, but like, I would probably feel more comfortable doing a twenty-five year, but still doing four hundred from ramp. Like, why are we having to say ramp is fifty-fifty of it?
You don't, we used to have to present.
That's, um. Cause I just, no, I know, I know, no, I'm just, I'm just. And my, we could make it work out.
And my only, my only counter to that is you have so much going from ramp, which was vision for so much else.
Yeah, so.
And now you're very limiting it for maybe forever.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, and I, and I think Layton's done that kinda.
Well, and I go away and buy your tray.
And that's right, and you only.
Well, we have to put it back in the ballot, yeah.
But I, but I think with, with ramp, people are seeing what, what we're actually getting, you know, we've got the parking lot awards, park, we're doing trailhead projects, the basketball courts. Gymnasium, I think people can see that you have a tangible thing that ramp's creating, so. But yes, the number, cause fun out of ramp, I think that's completely ghostly, I mean, in my mind, it'd be like three hundred and fifty thousand a year out of ramp.
Here's a, yeah, here's a proposal, what if you did, what if you did three, what if you set like a min, uh, a minimum? Like, or, or, uh, yeah, minimum that you pay out of ramp, but each year the ramp board. As, because like Perry, maybe there's a year that they, people bring things, and as they're looking at the money, they're like, okay, really? Like, it would be, make more sense to throw forty, four hundred thousand this year towards the gymnasium. But then the next year, we would like to spend that extra fifty, does that make sense?
Yeah, uh, that, that makes sense to me, because some of it so far, you know, Cole, it's been, you guys have the projects, that you have other projects, that you know, you're trying, we've been using this for.
Yeah.
And so we have limited, I don't wanna say limited, because we basically fully funded almost anything that comes in.
But as, but as far as.
So you set it at.
As far as ramp though, I think ramp, like if we're looking at other projects, if we know that, okay, ramp, you've got a hundred and fifty to two hundred that is for other projects. A hun, three hundred and fifty to four hundred thousand is going towards the gymnasium every year.
Right.
The projects get, just get tailored to, they may take longer, but we can tailor a project to fit, to fit the funding.
The idea would be, uh, that like some years when you're like looking at, as the ramp committee, each of them know, like, okay, remember we put three fifty towards the gymnasium. But keep in mind, if we, if we have extra. Where we put it. Towards.
And I'm, I think this is a perfect use of ramp.
哪种 is the revenue? Hang on, Mike's got a question.
I just have a question about the ramp, because one of the big sell items on ramp was that we weren't gonna touch that, that. And, uh, they weren't gonna be able to get the money, so what is this gonna do to the availability?
They still would.
More money, more them.
It won't do a thing.
They haven't asked for, see, I don't know how much.
So they're, they're typically spending on arts and mu, and museum, anywhere from fifty, fifty to the high, I would say it's about thirty thousand a year.
And we're bringing in about five hundred?
Five hundred and forty.
Five twenty, five thirty?
Five fifty.
Yeah.
Currently, 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 and with, you know.
Cause if you're making those people mad, then what are you gonna do then?
No, I, I think we should, uh, currently that's about what, uh, the arts and museum forces are, the most coming for ramp right now is fifteen.
But, like I said, that, that group that you could make mad seem to be very vocal, and, uh.
Yes, exactly. Yeah, we are.
So it could cause this ramp to go away in about seven years now. What would you do then? What would be your?
Living source, if you don't have it?
Living source scenario when that went away?
You'd have to come up with an alternative source, much like.
I can't imagine though.
I can't.
I mean, well, that group.
Sorry.
I'm really benefit from something like that, like this.
So as, as long as ramp's been ran, there hasn't been, at least to my knowledge, any county or city that's run ramp. It's, it's been.
That it didn't get re.
That didn't get re-upped.
I think you're able, I think you are able as a city to demonstrate to the populace that, the benefits of it.
Yeah.
And it's not, you're not seeing the hurt in your wallet.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, Mike, I mean, I think protecting art music, that they still have the ability.
They were a big reason why we got it.
And I, and this doesn't change, uh, what this changes is our ability on the.
Had we have not sold that, those two, I don't know that would have passed.
It changes our ability on the parks front to do stuff, that's why we just say.
Re, resurface the pickled old quarters.
It may just take us longer to do things, but it doesn't take that ability away, it just, um, but the arts and music stay. Full, basically, they would say fully funded from what they request have been the last three years, they wouldn't see a change.
And you say history shows it's never been re-upped?
From my knowledge, his, I've never heard anything like Salt Lake County just continually pass, I think.
Cities renewed theirs, boundaries renewed theirs.
And I think it's cause when you can show the, to me, when you can show the community, hey, this is what is getting, these are the things that we're getting done, these are the. Not, you wanna use the term like a legacy project, but these are the things that are gonna last, it's a long, longer.
Most popular tax out there, if there is such a thing.
What's the point of that?
Well, it's because it's a sales tax.
Yeah.
You're saying raise your property tax to pay ramp?
Everybody paying. It's not on your, it's not on your groceries, it's not on your food, so, right?
They would tell you to go.
Everyone's favorite thing is recreation parks, right, art.
So, so the other sources of revenue, is that major we could access?
So no ramp, so. So every.
Yeah.
Should be towards this, this ten million dollars?
When we talk about ten and a half million, I mean, if it varies from that, there, there are some funds that we could access. I mean, if it comes in at ten to seven, then we could give it, some fund balances to use or.
So according.
Or depending on, you know, we could even lower that.
That's what I was wondering.
There's no ramp tax in any Utah city has ever been repealed, yeah, so.
Oh, is that, did you slip that up?
Oh, that's good to know.
Your scenario is here for the ten million, right?
Yes.
Okay, the bottom line is, if we went to twenty-five year, it'd be thirty-four dollars annually to.
That's assuming, Mike, that's assuming we do three twenty out of ramp.
Right, that's assuming.
But if, but if we did, if we did three sixty out of ramp or three, get, it, I, I need kids, I looked at it, it's about a dollar.
Okay, go through.
A dollar per house per ten thousand. So if you dropped, if you took it up to three fifty, it'd be like twenty-eight dollars annually.
These are huge generalizations, so.
Yeah, it's not same.
It's gonna give you four, four and a quarter percent, I mean, you just have to understand the concept.
I get it, it's not.
Is there any money out there at four and a quarter percent right now?
Well, I think it's about four, four fifteen right now. Um, it's very, even in a day, twenty, thirty basis point two in a single day.
And as high as five, five.
So, so it depends on when you go to market, make a good day or.
It's not as volatile as Tesla stock.
We also talked about being.
Attacking like Tesla though.
Being creative and bonding partial.
Five hundred and fifty.
Right, if interest rates are so.
Yeah, you could bond in tranches, you could say, we're gonna borrow over a six-month period, six different draws, and hopefully you.
Hope getting better interest rates.
So what's the amphitheater discussion, what's the, do we wanna, are we bringing that up on the slide or no?
No, cause the, the dis, the district's not even, that's a.
That's so far away.
So, it's not so far, but it's not in their eminent, um.
Two would not, the two would not fly.
The district architect group is not, uh, hasn't been presented.
As far as the amphitheater does, yeah, that's a high-level superintendent.
Yeah.
But they would treat that as a separate entity, or you were hoping that they would then maybe assume the bond or pay us enough money to pay off the bond or?
No, no. They, they just would like to acquire some property, part of the park, in order to build amphitheater on, on that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And then it would be sort of, okay, well, maybe we could reduce this, this cost for whatever that land, we value that. And then it would bring in another amenity for.
Should be awesome.
Charge you ten million?
But, but we don't know, I mean, they haven't, we have, we have, to the point of.
So really, it should not be a part.
Yeah, I mean, in my mind, I'm thinking, yeah, that would be a really awesome future benefit, but we don't have a dollar now, not yet.
Can I ask two questions? Okay, so my first question is this orange box over here, are those being considered in these figures?
No.
No, okay, and then my second question is, how do we feel this affects our ability to bond for, say, public safety projects in the near future? Like, a west side fire station, like, if we bond for this, is that gonna make it difficult to bond for the things? Or is it like, well, we shouldn't have too many bonds, but we could do it?
Or an op center.
Yeah, or an, or an op center, sure, yeah, any, any of those things.
We have very little bonds right now, you know, we have this building and, and the police station, so there's, you know, bonding capacity. The question would be, is, is there a capacity in the public to, to vote for a bond or, or to pay additional property tax? Makes sense?
Meaning you could get the loans, it's whether or not the people wanna pay for it.
So it doesn't necessarily affect our ability to.
Your credit still.
To have a good public safety.
Your credit's great, and it's not gonna take your credit.
Yeah, this isn't an either or, this is a.
Art sell for instance, there's a lot of families in neighborhoods, your kids have absolutely no, want to do anything sports or athletic, they don't wanna do it. Their parents don't care that they don't wanna do it, and they think paying into something like that is being something that's being forced on them. I mean, there's, there's a lot of goods that come with recreation, but when you think about it, there's a lot of people in your neighborhood who absolutely want nothing to do with recreation.
But I, I will make the argument that you need to think more, it's not just, recreation has a, a very broad term. We just learned, uh, yesterday, Layton City is actually starting in one of their gyms, they're doing a, a community band in, in their, I think it's Shoreline or maybe Legacy. There's science camps, there's all sorts of, like, my son was active in robotics, uh, robotics needs space.
The first robotics of the.
So it's, uh, it is called a gymnasium, I, I did that, but it, when we look at what we wanna do with it, it's more than your sports. Because there are people, like I got my son, sports he didn't care about, but he got into robotics, he got into science. And so there's things that we can do with the space, you know, that we can do other things that are not a hundred percent quote recreation. So that's, that's our charge, like, with my staff.
I get that, I do, but I'm just saying, there's a lot of people out there who are gonna be obligated to pay into this. Or forced, basically forced into paying for it, they're gonna say, I don't want nothing to do with it, it's got nothing to do with me, my family or any of them, anybody around.
That's why I feel about the education tax.
Yeah, exactly.
So Mike, right before I came here, I was talking to my wife about it, and she said, I, I wanna, I wouldn't wanna pay for it, cause I'm not gonna use it. But then coming tonight. But then coming tonight and seeing the yoga class, like my wife loves yoga, I bet she would probably like to do that one evening a week or whatever. And so I think even some cardio equipment, I could see, you know, in our elderly population, they would probably love to have some of that. Walk around, jump on a bike, we don't have to have a lot of it, but I think the more that we can think outside of the box, like the robotic stuff, but kind of add. I feel more comfortable, and I think it's easier to express to the city where we do it best.
Cool, it's a pretty versatile space, like you, you know, as the population changes too, if we become more of an older population and there's a higher demand for. Yoga or for pickleball courts, I mean, you can program it according to where the demand is, and it's really pretty flexible.
It's very flexible, I mean, you could even go into like, we don't do very good at doing adaptive sports for those individual disabilities. Um, there are just so many components, you know, that you could think about, you know, what do we do, what do we need to be providing on an adaptive front? To provide somebody that doesn't have access to the normal stuff. Can we do an adaptive basketball league where we have things? I've got a niece that's a, you know, has a some mental struggles, and so she's in the Special Olympics. And they do all these Special Olympic basketball and all these different things, so. I'm trying, in my mind, it's broadening my horizon on what we, cause we've been ourselves in this box where we we program what we have. And we do a very good job, and I probably believe that if you, if this box was bigger, we could program and. But you're right, we're not gonna hit everybody, there's gonna be those people that, we we never will, and it doesn't matter what we do.
Right, there was never.
We'll never hit everybody.
There's never a slam dunk on anything, but I think that the vast popularity of our programming right now just shows that there's a huge demand for recreation.
And not just for our residents, I mean, other people will come and watch these programs and watch these sports, and it does bring people. It's not, it's not gonna make our sales tax go through the roof, and so it's gassing up and getting one to Kville, but it does bring traffic to this area. That is maybe has felt a little bit unexciting, and you know, it 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 puts renewed energy back into the community, and it's a community asset. And so I totally understand, cause you know what, will I use this? Probably not. I don't know, maybe I'll get on the wake and show, but. But but really, my friends that I've talked to about it, who all have, they're all, you know, around the West Side, a lot of people have pools and stuff. They probably won't use it, but they're excited about it, thinking, oh, Kville, that's cool, we actually would have something nice, so. I I, not everybody will think that, and I understand it, but I just think it's a great community investment in our, in our community, and it. It is, is an opportunity to gather, and people like that. The other things, so.
Two questions, the, are you concerned at all about, like, the conflict of having a building that's like. Is it the, is it the education, is it ours, is it the, you know what I mean? Like how that can sometimes like two owners, two people that want one thing one way and the other one is the other way.
Sure, that that's, that's always a concern, but I think we personally would have a great relationship with with Davis School District, and it just boils down. To communication, you know, we have a very good relationship right now with the scheduler, and Layton City's have good relationships. With with their schools. A lot of us too, is the principal has a big influence on that relationship, and we do. My recreation staff does a very good job of maintaining those relationships, because we a hundred percent need. The relationships to be good, because we need access to the spaces we currently use, and so if if that relationship sours. Currently, they can just completely black us out.
Right.
Like, so yes, there's always a concern, though.
Well, I think as we pay fifty of it, like, that's where I hope, I mean, I'm sure Nick has some ideas if we need to, but something.
We don't, we have an inner local agreement with the school district currently.
And then the second, uh, second question is, and this may be thinking outside the box, Tammy, you with the Davis Tech. I wonder if they would be willing to pitch any money in if we allowed their, their students to be able to come down and walk on the track. And use the gym, you know, use the different things, like, are we gonna require people to have like a Kaseville ID to get in? Or you just kinda come in? I'm just wondering if maybe it'd be worth approaching Darren and them to say like, hey. You know, this could be something you guys could advertise for your school, that when people are in between classes or whatever.
Well, but if it's during the day, though, that's not, that's not.
During the day.
Well, they are during the day.
I just, I don't.
I get more nervous about adding a third party to the uh.
I don't see that.
But these are all, I think these are all things that we can, we'll figure, we have to figure out, cause we don't have all the answers as far as. Are we gonna charge a membership? Are we gonna charge a fee to someone who wants to come and walk around the track? My first impression is like, I'm not gonna charge a fee to someone that who wants to come around and just walk around the track. You know, the other, you know, do we wanna have one night a week that we have it's in an open gym? You wanna come with your kids, and you just wanna shoot hoop, or you wanna do something? Maybe there's one night a month or something that, it's just open gym. You you come and just play, you and your buddies wanna come play, there's no leagues, nothing like that.
One, one thing that would have to be for sure, I mean, this would have to be a stone somehow, that they couldn't just all of a sudden say, all of a sudden our. Oh, our basketball team wants to be able to come in at night and practice, and so we're not gonna let you here on two or three nights.
No, that, that could never be it. It 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 doesn't happen with Layton City, but that currently happens now with our relationship with the gym.
Right.
Because we don't have any ownership ahead of us, so we'll get an email at three o'clock, hey, our basketball team's gotta practice tonight. We already had it scheduled for junior jazz, and they're, so it's, all these coaches, hey, sorry, practice is canceled tonight, so, but no, those are. And there's probably certain nights throughout the year that the district ahead of time, if we calendar throughout the year, and say, okay, on this night, we're gonna need it. Because we have a, let's say a band concert or something like that, that are scheduled months and months in advance.
So.
Orientation.
Finance guru geniuses, if if you were financing this, how would you, would, do you all have a recommendation on what you'd save? You know, what, what you have up there?
Scenario two.
That's sort of what I would say.
Five dollars an annually increase, you save hundreds of thousands of dollars in interest.
Interest, I mean, probably they're, you know, if in that time period.
Hey, I agree with what you're saying there, but if you took scenario three, and you paid a higher amount, you'd get a different. You would pay it off early, and you wouldn't get that interest.
Oh, no.
Yes, you would pay off early. I mean, that's, that's the twenty year.
But this is, this is based on the three twenty annual payment with. You're saying we take the twenty year, but we pay, but the ramp pays extra money per year, and we take off so many years. And you end up, but don't you actually get a lower interest rate, so a lower payment or whatever, but you pay it off earlier and pay that interest.
Better interest rate with the twenty.
Twenty, the twenty-five, you can get a higher interest rate.
But Mike, to your point, that's a good idea.
So what about the the pre, the gym right now over here? Any discussion on what?
We don't, we don't call this a gym, cause it's a, it's a fire station that has, has a floor on it, that's a.
Yeah, so the fire station with the floor on it, any discussion of what that could potentially be?
We, we would still use it, cause it gets good rentals for, it has a batting cage in it, it's still.
So we would still use it?
We would still use it, it would just still be our, but what's really sad is we've had to put our kindergarten basketball, I don't know if you've ever been there when kindergarten. I don't know if you remember to try when we had, tried to hold city council in there when this was under remodel, and it was the worst experience. Imagine having little kids in a gym where you have no seating and no. So it's gonna be more used for what we currently do, like our batting cages and, um. Current things that we, yeah, our, our community play, uh, HoboX that we're partnering with, they're using it right now, it's for the rehearsal space.
So another quick question, follow up, so you said thirteen thousand kids currently participate in rec.
Keep, keep in mind that some of those are gonna be counted twice, that's how many, that's how many participants participate in all of our sports, all, all the sports, okay.
What about junior jazz alone?
So junior jazz, uh, don't quote me, but I believe it's running around seventeen hundred, uh, youth participating in junior jazz.
You get a lot of wait lists for junior jazz?
We do.
Cause a lot of your thirteen thousand is soccer.
Soccer, baseball, soccer twenty-two hundred.
Baseball's how much?
Baseball's about fifteen hundred.
Eight pounds. To support seventeen hundred, two thousand youth in our community, I think that's worth the cost, even if it's not your own.
Plus the waitlist.
And what we, and plus the waitlist, and that's what we feel bad about, is we have young people. Because if, when they're participating in recreation sports, they're not participating in the comp, cause comp is a separate, you know, mom and dad are are funding your ability to play in comp. But we view recreation as an, as an opportunity for just kids to come out and participate in a team environment. If you think about what that does to the social aspect of a young person, come participate in a team and be involved in a community. And then to have a waitlist, and you just like, we want to, we just don't have the gym time to add more teams.
Makes an hour or two off their phone, that's, that makes it worth it.
And and so that's, we look at recreation as a. It's a community value, I mean, it's, what does a community put values on, and you know, I think we do. Kaseville City and the Kaseville County have done a great job of supporting our parks, our trails, our recreation programs, because I think that's what makes. It's part of it, along with all the other things, but I'm just telling you.
Great job, Cole, I, I mean, I recommend we do it, stick it, do scenario two, that would be my hope, that we would continue to do that. And and on the off chance that ramp has additional funds those years, that they will consider putting the additional towards this payment. Just lower the payment, whatever, but.
Yeah, and I was a no all week since I heard the ten million, but. You know, this presentation tonight, when I'm looking at an extra two dollars and fifty cents a month, possibly. Um, and how many youth this will impact, my parents put me in junior jazz, I was afraid of my own shadow, or junior jazz, and I played junior jazz, and it was awesome. And so I do think that, after kinda looking at the numbers, I, I support it, but I would like. Very close attention to be paid to the design for the opportunity or possibility of adding some cardio equipment as well. As for elderly population, who, I'd like to use a little bit of that on a limited basis.
The children, they're very inclusive with us, just in these initial phases, and as we get farther along, they're very, because we're, we're at the table.
There's a way to make it look more like a, a city community center versus an ancillary piece of the school.
I think that's why, I think that's what the tour, hopefully next Friday, just so you can see like, still and stuff in work. The school district does a great job of making it look aesthetically pleasing, and this has, and the one, they're talking about angles, you know, everything in this is designed with a.
Yeah, a little bit of that.
Something like angles, like, so the angles of walls are ten percent, and.
Which I thought was more expensive, apparently it's not, and it's better for acoustics.
If you have angles in buildings, the sound bounces off the angles, where if it's a square building, the sound. The rates.
I I thought, just make it simple, make it.
If you have angles on airplanes, it, they hide from radar, so.
Can I add something? Okay, well, I I don't know, this is such a tough, cause it's such a big number, um, you know, and essentially. I I might get that it's two fifty a month, but essentially we are forcing everyone in town to get a gym membership for two fifty a month. I mean, but you would look at it that way, right, 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 I'm just saying, you could look at it that way, and that's kind of a hard thing to swallow, but on. And even walking into this room today, and before the presentation, I was a hard no, and even halfway through the presentation, I was still a pretty hard no. Um, but I have talked to some of the elderly people, and they were like, oh, good, we won't have to go to the mall anymore, so I feel like that's a win.
But they can't use it during the time they go.
Are they not alive at night?
They can go in the morning.
They can still go at night, well, that's true, but.
There was a couple at the mall the other night when I was there with my wife, and this was.
This gives them the opportunity.
So what time are we talking every day?
So we typically will get it, we'll typically, we'll get it at five PM to whatever we deem our end hours are. Five to ten, five to eleven, five to twelve, and we get it all day Saturday, all day, you know, Sunday if we choose to stamp it on Sunday.
And I'd vote no, I'd vote no on Sunday.
So hang on.
I wouldn't be interested in it if we don't open it on Sunday, Barry, because there's too many people in this city that don't go to church on Sunday.
I had a lot of people knock on my door, or when I was knocking on the door, too, like, why isn't I getting on Sunday, so I'd be. Okay, sorry, so my last thing, and probably the most important thing to me, is I did have a resident reach out, and they were like, we, this is huge, we don't think you should be bonding. We're more concerned about public safety, and that's why I asked that question is, you know, is this gonna put us in a bad position? If it's not gonna put us in a bad position, I'm more.
Public safety, how?
We, like, you know, we maybe wouldn't be able to bond for, you know, like an op center or a fire station, or, or whatever we need to in the year.
Keep in mind that the police station drops off in two thousand thirty-one, two thousand thirty, you're only talking four years for that police station to drop off. That might be the time that you bond for the fire station, you would have that financial capacity to do that.
Well, and I get heartburn over the fire station, and I want to talk about it happening more quickly than that, but that's a separate conversation. Um, but to know that we could maybe still do that, or we could definitely still do that, if we felt like we needed to, makes me feel more comfortable with it. But yeah, I was definitely like a hard no, cause ten point five million dollars is a large number.
Uh, Abby, you could probably feel, I like what you said about forced membership, because it caused me to think. About just anything we're charging, like Mike's always been really good to say, like, there's five things that the city is responsible to. The five mine or whatever, he keeps changing the number, but. But you know, it's power and all those different things, but then also recreation, and so like, we bond for parks. You know, and that idea, we're forcing someone to have a, a yard or pay for a yard, but really, it's kind of our. One of the things we're supposed to provide is recreation.
Cost as much.
Right, yeah, no, 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 I get it.
John, there's a lot of people out there that will argue that, I'll say, why is it, why is it the city's responsibility to provide recreation? Why is that the city's responsibility? I think it's part of the community, don't say, but I'm saying there's a lot of people out there that says. It should, there's, there's a lot of private people out there that we're trying to compete with, you know, are you hurting them by putting this in? Does that hurt the ones who spent the money and put the private ones in Kaseville? I don't know, I really don't know.
I go to Vasa, it is so busy over there, it is just.
And to compete, I mean, there's no other indoor tracks in the city or even, well, Farmington, I guess.
Well, and Davis locks their outdoor tracks, you can't use it.
You can't use the outdoor tracks.
And some people can't afford to be in there, somebody, some, a lot of people can't afford to be in these. Rec leagues that like these indoor basketball recreations that that are down here, they're, oh my gosh, take out a mortgage.
Well, those are the conflicts.
Yeah, and not everyone can afford that.
Yeah, we do, this is recreation, and, yeah, all these arguments are.
I mean, it's true, Mike, some people will say that for sure.
Yeah, you can, you can say that about all the trails, you can say about all the parks and stuff, but you take those away from a community. And then look at what your community becomes.
And really, we're one of the few cities that doesn't have something like this, recreational facility.
We, we're the only city, we got Centerville and everything, Farmington South, it's part of the South, David's direct district.
But we don't have access.
Farmington has a gym, Layton has a gym, Syracuse, I'm just talking gyms, but facilities, Syracuse has a facility, Layton has three. Clearfield has some, West Point's getting one, so, um, it's Sunset, Kaseville, and Fruit Heights.
Are we gonna let Fruit Heights people come?
Fruit Heights pays our non-resident fees, when any programs they participate in, they pay a non-resident fee.
Which we can charge, as well, right?
We're gonna triple.
Okay, but.
Anyway, sorry.
Can I ask you a question about, uh, do we get it in the morning at all on school, school days?
Like six to eight.
Five to six.
We probably could, we haven't got into that, cause it's, you know, what does that look like from us?
Because then again, you're talking, you're gonna need a. Employee being there to open it up and be there.
I think we're open to anything, um, what what that looks like, I don't know, right?
A lot of elderly people would maybe walk early in the morning.
I don't even know, I, I don't know.
Because you'd have to be out there probably twenty, half hour before school.
It's gonna be over there.
Junior High starts at seven, eight o'clock, we probably have to be out there by like seven, eighteen. But could we open from five to seven? Sure, I, I don't see why we couldn't.
I think there's people that will watch.
Well, why would the junior high use it? They probably wouldn't use it for.
No, it's probably just.
But those are, and and that's, that's a great. But those are, and and that's, that's a great question, and those are great options, but. I think that's a, how do we operate it now? Whether are we going to, which is, and we have, we have other things to talk about, and we're an hour into this.
Yeah, let's go.
And so.
Do we need sort of a roll call kind of consensus?
Well, you're concerned, you know, I mean, Abby, you have other concerns?
Ten million dollars, it's a second and a half hour, I don't know.
I mean, it's. Yeah, I'm with Mike on that, but when we have to let it go by.
So it's like that we have to let it go. Well, well, when we pass our our budget, I would think that we have to.
What, so we don't have to know by next week? Because I thought we had like a one week timer.
They wanna, they wanna start design pretty soon, so they can go out to bed in December, January, so I think they're gonna wanna know something within the next couple of weeks. They told us, I think they told us last week, like, we wanna know today, but I think they were kind of tongue in cheek.
Yeah, they told me.
My thought is, we should at least get through the tour, you know, Friday next week, and then maybe.
Yeah, yeah.
But I want to do that before.
Yeah, for sure.
About public caring. Maybe the public caring is when the final decision is made, you know, that way it's sort of transparent too, that the public knows that we're considering this.
Through the budget process this year.
Yes.
Exactly.
And keep in mind, we like, we all accrued or like said, go ahead, with the seven million. I mean, I'm not saying that like ten's, ten's big.
Yeah.
But like the difference in the annual.
That's fifty percent.
It's fifty percent increase, okay, look at it.
Okay, yeah, but your, but your annual.
It's not, stay deep.
Yes, it is.
Seven times ten, seven times ten.
From a seven million to ten million, it's.
We'd have to go fifty, thirty, thirty six.
Because you go thirty.
No, you go, you go.
You have to have two halves versus the seven.
Your, your, you go half of seventy is three point five.
Be quite high.
And then you're saying it's gonna be, so that's.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
They're stopped for like a year.
But but what I'm saying is, if you look at like the cost per annual household that we were all comfortable with, was thirty dollars. It's gone up from thirty to thirty six.
When we get sweet.
I say we do this.
As you pointed to scenario three.
Fifty seven months difference. I do. Just because if you look at, if you literally paid this.
Where's the party?
If you paid this and did this, that would take a year and a half off for automatically.
By the time you start to turn down the dollar, it's a year.
So the average age over twenty five would pay off early, that would be the plan, right?
I think, I think.
Yeah, I would wait to know about it too.
Because you're paying, you're gonna pay twenty million dollars, of course.
It's a smaller payment, like you said, Mike.
It's why they pay my house is off.
It's very comparable to what.
I just, the reason I say that.
Nothing gonna get hung up on.
And and then.
I don't wanna get, I don't wanna.
You know, we just need to say, are we gonna go for it, or? Yeah, that's the, are we in or we out?
Yeah, we can get as creative as we want to.
But you're saying, you know, I, I wish I could, I mean, it's one thing. When you're building a fire station or a police station, council has to make that decision, I get it. When you're doing something like it's recreation, that's just fun, but everybody has to pay for. I'd like to have, I would, I'd like to opportunity to get a little bit more outside input, you know, I mean. I feel like, I I was hoping that we would have time to actually do a general obligation bond and put it on the ballot. I was actually hoping we would be able to do that. Because then I would know, I have the buy-in of the public. Now, if it's a fire station, I'm gonna say, no, I'm gonna build a fire station when the time comes and it needs to come in.
So was that, was that your thought with the seven million dollars as well?
I would be, yeah, because at first it was four million, and then all of a sudden it was seven million.
And I I blamed the super.
Yeah, that was.
You know, so that seven million was an actual shocker to me, when you said ten billion.
Yeah, we get it, we were, we were, uh.
Jesus Christ.
We were.
So what you're saying is that you guys would like to do the tour before we give kind of a go ahead, and maybe give the go ahead at the, at the, uh, uh, public hearing?
I I think, just clearly, I think we'd like to have an answer for it, sorry, the school district after our public hearing.
After the public.
Yeah, we could tell the school. Yeah, I I I agree, I I agree having that time.
Yeah.
We just.
That's, yeah.
Pushing.
And if something we can prepare on our website that says.
Let me say this.
Considering, arguing, this is the cost.
Well, there's a, there's a difference between the school district and the architects are the ones that we're wanting. I think the school district understands boards and commissions. The architects, you know, of course, they wanna, because they wanna just keep going through their, through their flows, other schedules. But but having that till June, whatever, the June fif, June second, June.
You know, we have to notice the budget hearing, and I think a big part of that can be talking about, a big, huge part of this budget is this project and. Information out there about what we're doing.
Make sure that people know that it's not a done thing, like, because people are like, you're just making decisions and no one even knows about it. Like, if we put it out like that, can we say, this is under consideration, not.
Not a plan for that one.
Not, not, we're rubber stamping this.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
You know, absolutely.
But you're, maybe, for that much a year.
Well.
I mean.
On the website, or?
Social media? No, I mean.
Put it out separately and have it as a discussion up there, I don't know.
I just, I, but I'm also, I see where the district's coming from.
In my life, where the city burned.
We can't do that. No, I said there's three conversations going on.
She's here, she's telling you.
Oh, I'm sorry, Amber, it's.
I'm sorry, she, before I remain, she tells me to control this room, and I don't, sorry.
You got my.
For example.
Okay.
While they're talking.
Sorry, Emery just wants to have one conversation.
One at a time.
We're having a side conversation, we don't want to record it. Just, just talking about how this is a, it's a good partnership, because the district uses it during their peak times. And in all honesty, our peak times are evenings and weekends. And so where you even split that cost fifty fifty, um.
And I will, and I was telling him, I was just saying, my experience going in the rec center in Farmington during the day, during the week. There's not very many people in there, very seldom, especially in the summer. Well, in the summertime, there's more, because it's cooler in there, they can go in and do things, but in the wintertime, you know, there might be ten people in there. And that's really, some days I go in there and there's nobody in there, which we'll have all summer, right?
Yeah, yeah, there'll be a couple weeks in the summer where it's down for, when they do their courtly surfacing and things like that, but.
You know, Mike, it's interesting, because I've, I've been dragging my feet from the very beginning on this, and we've been saying how much, this is a once, like. This is an opportunity, we won't get it again, so it's kind of leaning on you, and then we heard the ten million, I think all of us had a lot of heartburn. Um, at a ten million, but you know, seeing the the numbers laid out here, I think that is absolutely doable. And honestly, we'd be in a much better position now if R C V council agreed to do this fifteen years ago, probably would have been paid off by now. And I just don't think there's gonna be another opportunity at all for anything like this.
Like this is really hard for me, don't back me in the corner and tell me to give you an answer yes or no, because your answer's gonna be no.
Yeah, no, I feel the same way, but I also feel like this is a very big decision. If we don't get this right, it will, no future city council will have an opportunity to even.
Mike, I agree, I I really love, wish we had the opportunity to put this off, put this on the ballot, but the timing. You know, or that we would have put it on the ballot last fall. Was there a ballot? There wasn't a ballot.
We could have timed it.
It because, because I totally agree with you, because then you need to total buy-in.
Yeah.
And then you have thirty five thousand, whether you have however many vote, or you have that affirmation, or not.
You know, and that's, that's would have been, that's would have really helped to have, because this is a big deal. It's not, it's not a core thing, it's an essential thing, I don't know, no bans used to get banned, I'm just saying.
Uh, we'll, we'll fight out in Parkland.
Yeah, but I mean, it is, it's, but, but to have the buy-in of the public is huge when you're going for something like this.
Yeah.
I don't need the buy-in necessarily for building a police station as much, because I have to provide.
And if you go back to the very first slide, or the second slide that Cole showed, that showed back in just four years ago. That seventy one percent were all for a rec center, which would have cost four times this. Would have cooled, but.
And that's kind of why we wanted to show you the data, that the survey that we did does provide some level of, we're not just shooting in the dark as far as guessing what. We do have some statistically valid information that this is valuable to.
I I, so if we're on record, I mean, I would go, you know. I grew up a gym rat, I I've been in gyms, that that's my life, it's been my whole life, I used to, you know, I won't say what I broke into, play basketball and. I I I love them, there's, uh. And the opportunity, when you say the kids on waitlist, that maybe we're able to get additional coaches, we don't have to have waitlist, you know, without waitlist goes down to more opportunities. The, the number sticks in my throat and makes me wanna gag. Yeah, I know we can do it, I know you can undo all the payments, but I also know that by the time you're done, it's costing twenty million dollars. And you know, it's with the, because the interest, that's why banks love this. But I, you know, I would, I would for it. Want you to order pizza? How long are we gonna be there, actually, because I am hungry.
We were hoping that this would be.
That's why.
Is it September?
Yeah.
We were so sleepy.
Oh, you guys, it's September.
Jason, I'm sorry, I really jinxed us. So, I think that's where we are at this point of the gym.
So, that's why I tried.
Come on, come on the tour if you're available, on the thirtieth, and the school district representatives will be there. Where's it at? Where are we going? So we're meeting, meeting at Shoreline, we'll start at Shoreline.
We'll send it, yeah, it's in the ad, it's in the calendar invite, the address is.
So we'll go to Shoreline, and then they'll take us to Horizon, the new one in West Point, so you can see.
I'm typing.
That is, so, yeah, I hope you, and then it's gonna shut down.
Yeah.
Oh, I thought you said, can you go get that?
Are you kidding me?
I'm staying for the. Numbers, so.
So, next slide.
Wait, where you? Are you just giving the Emery chocolates?
Candy.
Oh, oh.
It's just the update of discharge.
I got thirty minutes, I can't.
You don't need to meet here with this, right?
Uh, yeah, you're good, Cole, thanks.
Thank you, Cole, for the.
Thank you, thanks, Cole. Hopefully you're not here when I come to work in the morning.
So I did, I took scenario three and updated this slide with scenario three.
Okay, the first one is original.
Yeah, the twenty five year.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
That's why I'm okay. All right, so.
You gonna offer Abby anything?
I guess recap of last meeting, we came in, well, starting off first work, work session, we were thinking, all right, we've got fifteen. Staff requests over the last few years. We were thinking at the time, not knowing what the budget or revenue forecast was gonna look like, we were gonna say three positions. Assistant attorney, deputy fire chief, and a sergeant. Then we got the dire revenue forecast of, you know, we can't, we can't really do three positions, maybe we go one position. Uh, kind of got some feedback, like maybe we should go a little more, well, then we came back to the last work session, and I was thinking, let's go with the assistant attorney and a sergeant. And hold on the deputy fire chief. Um, and then the vote was kind of like, well, let's just throw in the deputy fire chief, and that's kind of where we ended the work session of the last meeting. And I get the feedback that three is too much, which I frankly don't disagree with.
I I think we, I think it is.
I, I, I guess I must have missed the vote somewhere, I must have been over there not even paying attention, because. I thought we talked about that all of our department heads got together and came to a scenario that they all agreed. That assistant city attorney would be the one hired that would be due for the year, and then all of a sudden, you guys showed up with these other three. I was blindsided by that a hundred percent, I was not expecting that at all, and I don't even know where that came from. I must have been asleep in the work session we were in. So the, so the department has got together and they prioritized the positions, and it was citizen attorney, citizen attorney was the number one and still is the number one priority. Deputy fire chief was number two initially, and then sergeant was number three, and at the last meeting, I said, you know what, I think we need to go with just the sergeant. Frankly, given the concerns that we, it honestly, a lot of it, I would admit, has to do with the shooting we had over in Farmington, and I, you know what, we need to really prioritize that, get some night supervision on. And so that's why I, I said, let's go with the sergeant, but.
And I was gonna say, and the reason that that happened also was just in talking to the police department. Then being able to communicate at least when I have a strike to them, like, in this area, and they said, the problem is, we have such young people that we're hiring. And and it's not that they're young, it's just they're inexperienced, and to have them on a shooting like that, I mean, the guy, they're so much.
You could, you could have a one day cop on a shooting like that with nobody around, you know?
You could make a fire. It it's insurance, it's to make sure it's.
I mean, and and you look at this budget, we're up to thirteen million dollars just for, for police and fire. For something people hope they never use.
Right.
I mean, it's just getting out of hand, and if you look at the cost increases we've done over the last, from twenty twenty two to now, in police and fire, we've increased at almost three million dollars. That's, that's somewhere we have got to stop.
I I will say.
And, let me finish, because the fact that you're concerned about, we got police officers, one, two, and three, and you're concerned about a supervisor being there at night? If there's an issue with supervising or whatever, the chief and the assistant chief are gonna find out about it, and they'll take care of it, that's their job, but. I mean, we already have six sergeants on the police department. And I, I sit and think. I have a, I go to a county where there is a sheriff and four deputies who take care of the entire county. For forty to sixty thousand people, and I don't, I mean, I, I'm thinking. We're concerned about having a supervisor on a night shift with one, two, and three officers, that just doesn't make any sense to me. There's a lot to unpack there, but it. We're showing that the, the coverage for patrol is is pretty slim, um, as we've grown, and we, we kind of provided those numbers earlier, I don't think you get that slide, but. Talked about that before, showing we are by far the lowest, uh, in terms of patrol coverage in Davis County. So there's definitely, we feel a need, the fact that we don't have supervision, and it's, when we talk about supervision, we're talking about. When you see the bad stuff on the news about cops getting in trouble, it's often because you got young cops that don't have supervision. What we're looking for is a senior person that can respond to these night calls, help, you know, with with those really tingly calls. And we're seeing more and more, you know, domestic violence issues at night, and and a lot of scary stuff that we're just, we don't. We've rolled the dice over a number of years, and this really comes down to what's our risk, you know, tolerance? Are we okay with with this? Because at some point, we're gonna roll the dice and we're gonna get, you know, bad number. And, and the fingers are gonna point to, well, you guys, you've talked about this, and. And that's really what it comes down to, I'm not saying that's right or wrong, but it has been a little bit of a risk, uh, how much risk do we wanna take? And we feel the numbers show that we, we need that night supervision, uh, for the sergeants, so. I get it, it's expensive, um, but we feel like to provide the level of service that we need. We've grown, the complexity of calls have gotten worse, and again, domestic violence numbers are going up and up. But usually when you grow, it's because you have growth in your community. If you look at the growth in our community, we've had less than one percent growth, or maybe one percent growth for the last few years. We added fifty five houses last year, we're on twenty six houses this year. We have no growth, we haven't had that much growth, and so, uh, usually adding employees comes from growth. Well, this isn't something that is due to growth in the last couple of years, this, this is something we should have probably filled years and years ago. We've grown a lot over the last twenty years, but patrol has grown, you know, relatively little compared to the population growth for the last twenty, thirty years.
Thirty five sworn officer. Three or thirty five sworn.
Right. We've seen growth with SROs, school resorts, you know, and with detectives and other things, but patrol. It's not growing.
Well, and, um, I, maybe I could just, in talking, please speak a little bit to the type of calls that they're getting, like Jason's mentioning. These are, they're, they're more complicated, obviously, there are suicide attempts, there, um, a lot of mental health issues are happening, and so. I mean, just recently, this week, they're, you know, not just scared people, but there, there are some dangerous things that happen within every community, including ours. And when you talk about, there's only maybe a certain amount of houses that have grown, we've got multi-generational families living in home, in houses. So I, I, I think that the population has grown, not necessarily in maybe additional doors and in hundreds of thousands, but. I think that there, there are more people per living space, um, just in terms of our economy, and so the need they're buying, the impact is, is bigger. The complexity of the calls is growing, and so, I, to the point of maybe that our payroll for, for, when he says increased by a couple million over the last little bit. They, it has, but so has every other city. I mean, when we look at, um, you know, your rank cities, and we know where we, we're not in the top half for sure in terms of, um, what we're doing budget wise, we're towards the bottom. But there's just been so much more movement in the last couple of years that I think really highlights the fact that this is important, and. But there's just been so much more movement in the last couple of years that I think really highlights the fact that this is important and I'm small government. Like, believe me, we are cheap.
I, I know, but you guys, but, but I feel like you guys act like nobody's showing up to the calls.
No, people are for sure, but it's taken more than.
The calls and, and it's like the shooting in Farmington, if you wanna use that for instance, I mean, it wasn't just the officers in Farmington because that call came in. You have Farmington officers, you have Centerville officers, you had Kaseville officers, you had the Davis County Sheriff's Department, all those people were there. They're all gonna be in, in those calls, but then you say supervisor, well, your supervisor might be out on a stalk when the next call comes in. He's not gonna be able to come supervise that call. They're out there on calls and, and so. I just, it's just adding an additional hundred and seventy thousand or whatever, fifty thousand dollars to the budget. And we have not, and I understand what you're saying, there's more people living in the houses, but the sad part of that is, we're not increasing taxes when we do that. We're not getting any more money to pay for this stuff.
And, and the costs for these things are continuing to rise, we need to defend that, it's true, things are more expensive and we're not capturing perhaps all of the revenue that we could if they were actually living in homes. But we also, as a city, don't wanna approve a lot of density that would provide homes for people that maybe could live out of the same situation. So, I, I think it's just a, it's a, it's not a, it's just overall, it's a national problem. And I hate the idea of increasing too, cause believe me, other places, I know how expensive they are. But at the same time, I think they're also, they're necessary. And so, that's my vote for that, but I understand and totally respect where you come with the mics, I appreciate your willingness to dig in.
You can increase the police budget to fourteen, and fire to fourteen million, you can hire as many people as you want, you can make it so six people show up to every call. But there just has to come a point when you have to make that decision. Are we spending too much? Have we increased it? Have we focused on that? We're talking about a gym we want that will help the community and whatnot, so. In one minute, we're talking about, let's help the community, let's increase it for the gym, now you're talking about an increase for another police officer when. I think we have to cover them, I do, we might be lacking some supervision at night. But I think if there's supervision problems, and, and I would hope that. As the city grows and we increase new growth and whatnot, then we can start adding people, but, you know, I've always been of the mindset. Wouldn't you add somebody here? It's full time, they're there forever, you wanna make sure you take care of them. So adding somebody to me is a huge thing. Cause I don't ever want it to be such that you add somewhere, you can't pay for the other elsewhere and you end up letting somebody go somewhere else or something, because there's only so much money. I'll be honest with you, I wish you would have come to us with a budget that was twenty-four million dollars, because that's our revenue. I wish our budget matched our revenue. That's what a budget is, it's a budget is when you match your revenue, okay? We're not, we're three million dollars above our revenue. Two million dollars above our, sorry. But, two million, three hundred thousand. But, that's a budget. I feel like we're operating on a cost plus basis here. Let's just come up with the cost, we'll go to the council at the end of the year, we'll just increase taxes and pay for it. I mean, I, I was just dumbfounded when we showed up with a police sergeant, deputy chief.
To, to staff and Jason's credit, cause I've thought about the same thing, I think where your, maybe Mike, where your. I shouldn't say how you are feeling, but I think what the impression I got from that first meeting was. When, when you said that we had that first meeting, I think it was in this, maybe in this room, it was before we even met with them, I feel like, but. You'd said, yeah, they've all come together and they wanna do one, but you did say. We had these positions and they were ranked, and then when we had the second meeting, just the most recent one, it still was not. They didn't change the ranking, they just said, we would recommend that we also. Do this police officer sergeant position because here's why. So I don't, I don't feel like it was dishonest or like a sneaky move.
Honest or whatever, but it sure was a blind side in my head.
You felt, felt, yeah, felt like.
Completely different than what I thought.
It moved very fast.
Somewhere, didn't know where it was, I must have left, I don't know. But, the bottom line is. We don't work for Kaseville City, we represent the people that put us in here to watch the money and take care of the budget, and that's what we're trying to do here. And I'm saying, you can only ask so much of people. They only have so much to give to you. And you're already talking a tax increase with just, with, with just one person, I believe, was about twenty, thirty percent was a tax increase, somewhere around that.
Seventeen.
Seventeen?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six, okay, twenty-six percent, but to add the people, it went up to thirty-five percent about. I would have thought more so, you know, because of what we did last year, we had to. Bring in a million dollars in fund balance or whatever, and so I would have been looking for something that was somewhere in the neighborhood of a twenty-four million dollar, we'd have to make up the fund balance and. You'd say, we should do tax, truth and taxation every year to take care of, of inflation, well, inflation was two point five percent last year, two point nine, two point five, depending on who you ask. So you'd be have, we'd be looking at a budget that had to make up the million dollars that we took out of fund balance and the one that was two point five. So, yeah, a two point five increase for, for that, but we're so far beyond that, beyond that. And I guess that's what I'm saying, how is it a budget if it's just?
I, I, I think the part of the reason that we are behind is because we did make a decision as a council to not fund new positions for a couple of years. And I think that did put us behind. And I think we were in a catch-up mode to try to get to competitive, a competitive mid-range level, about five percent below fifty percent. So, I, I think moving forward, yes, I think it would make a lot of sense to be able to, to hold the line and say, okay, now we're caught up. Now we're in a better position as, as a city and in terms of staffing and infrastructure needs, I think we also weren't raising when we should have. Um, some of the fees that were reflecting the true cost of the custody business, the deficit that we're having in different departments and so. I totally understand.
I wished I could go to the family and I'd say, the only thing that you're gonna get an increase this year in your whole life is a hundred and fifty dollars. If it's not a six hundred and fifty thousand dollar house or a hundred and eighty dollars now or whatever. That's all you're gonna get, but don't, don't count, but that's not how it is. They're gonna get a hundred and thirty dollars from the sewer district or more. They're going to get, who knows what's gonna happen to the businesses with tariffs going on? They're scared to death, they don't know what to do, they don't even know how to operate their businesses right now, what, what they're, what, how much groceries haven't increased? How much, and, and we've done things, we, we increased the pay for our employees eight percent when it. Got to catch up, we did that, and, and that's why I think it's really important to take care of the people that you have. That's why adding new people to me is huge.
Totally understand.
Yeah, I get it, I, I was told when Shane was here that there was a need back then for these extra police positions and when it came up. To your point, it was, let's take care of the existing police officers, get them competitive rather than adding these positions. But, but those positions, that need has continued. And again, we started with fifteen or so positions that have been requested over the years, we narrowed that down ranking, you know, those. Sergeant was right up at the very top, number two on the list here. And again, it, it comes down to risk, I mean, how, I, I get it, like, we can use mutual aid and that's true at night. But when you have two police officers covering a city of thirty-four thousand at night on their own. It's easy to get tied up in one call, you know, and all of a sudden, two things are going, you got a DUI over here and you got this over here, domestic violence call, and then a third call comes in. Just getting that extra coverage when you need it is, is important.
Mike, you know, I would almost counter the taking care, you know, we're here to take care of the people. I'll just go to the fire chief, your deputy fire chief, you know, when you, and all I can go off of is what. We were told the last time, when you, we're the only city of the size, you know, that doesn't have a deputy or that, you know, and. There's things that we're not covering now. In a sense, you'd be helping take care of him and maybe other fire, other crew members by having that additional person. Does that make sense? But I'm trying, you know, and on the, on the police sergeant, same kind of thing, so if I have the. The officers that are out there in the field, they feel more comfortable and in a sense, it could be, it is a sense, taking care of them. There's the experience there to help them if they need it. It's all the, you know, it's, it's all an insurance policy, you know, that you hope you never, but. So I can, I can actually see some of it and I see the, you know, the deputy attorney. As helping the city and helping the other employees because you're able to take Rodolph and Nick, and, and that was an easy one to, I think, agree to.
Well, and I get that, but usually there's a step process, Harry, when you do that. Now, most cities, when they do that, the first thing they'll do is contract. They'll contract at about half the cost of what we're talking about putting one on. They'll, I, I mean, I know a lot of the cities use the county, they use the county attorney as their prosecutor, and it comes at about a half the cost. And, and that seems like a good increment that we could have done to step into this rather than just jump right into the other. I, I just feel like we just jump into stuff and we don't ease into it, like. I would hope you would when you're spending somebody else's money.
Well, we used to contract on Beagle. Is that what you're referring to? We did.
He was talking about.
Contracting. Prosecution.
Oh, oh.
Davis County does prosecuting for other cities, at a cost, at a quite a reduced cost of what we're talking about.
We contracted other legal services for years near, so.
And to me, if we're, we've had a hiring freeze last few years, but to suddenly fill like three positions, it almost feels like that's for not, really. So, I would like to see a more slower systematic approach. I agree with the position to help Nick, I absolutely agree with that. Sergeant, kind of mixed.
And I think we all talked early on, you know, there's so many needs of the city, they hit them with a, you know. And, and it made sense to, let's say, okay, let's do one this year, and I think, I didn't like it, but I was buying into it, you know, but. This was completely different than what I had anticipated, so, you know, one this year, maybe one year, two from that, another one year, two from that. Cause we're really not experiencing this rapid growth, we are not a very fast growing city at this point right now.
And we'll be.
Part of the reason that I felt like this was a good meeting to have was I feel like I didn't hear as much from. You and Abby during that last meeting, partly because I'm round number one, I'm round number two, and. Pete Erickson.
Was I not, no?
We were very quiet.
Yeah.
So I'm curious what you're thinking, Abby, or Councilman.
Um, I think I probably have more thoughts on this than we want to listen to tonight, so I will try to keep it brief. But I've talked to Chief about this, Chief Ober, about this sergeant position. Since I got on council, I mean, every year, you know, it's been on the list. So every year, I've gone to the department and said, okay, you know, justify these asks and, and you know, we've done the hiring freeze, for better or worse. But I mean, he's been asking for it for three years. And the last time, and I asked him, the last time they hired anyone in the department was seven years ago, so. And then I asked Melinda what our annual kind of population growth is, and she says we sit at around one percent, which is pretty normal. So if you consider the fact that we've been growing at about one percent since then and we haven't hired anyone in the police department for seven years, it's seven percent growth. And I don't know if that's big enough to make it a big deal for anyone or not. But I think that adds some context to the conversation we're having. I mean, I brought a whole ton of stuff, Chief gave, I think he gave us this the last time and I didn't read it, but when I went and talked to him again, he gave it to me and. It highlights a lot of the stuff that a sergeant position would be beneficial for, and it talks about a lot of the calls that we go on. And they're just. The one that really struck me is this one. Is it okay if I read it?
Sure.
Am I allowed to read this, Jason?
Uh, what's it say?
Uh, okay, so it describes a condition where, um. Well, it doesn't have any names on it. No, it describes a, a situation where officers went out and, um. Anyway, the long and short of it is. There were collisions with multiple uninvolved citizens. Who may not have been involved, had their bad supervision, so whatever situation this is, I won't go. And, 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 and so, to me, I never want. And I know this sounds dramatic or melodramatic or whatever, but I never wanna look any of our residents in the face and say. Well, because I wanted to save money, I rolled the dice. And now something terrible happened to you or your family members or someone you know, but aside from all of that, I think. I don't know, it's just, it's been on my mind for a long time. I think it's something we need, it is a service that we're providing, it's one of the, the key services that we provide is public safety, you know? And yeah, the, the, you know, to Mike's point, we've raised. We've raised employment costs, you know, what was it, two or three million, Mike? Okay, since twenty twenty-two, which is a good number to have in our metrics, but is it? I mean, the number raised isn't as important as, I mean, it's important, don't get me wrong. As, as the fact that, or the concept of, are we doing our job to protect people, like, are we providing the coverage they need, is this something they need? And, and that's, so, those are all the things I look at when I'm looking at this, I've gone back and forth about the deputy fire chief. So I'll love to talk about that some more with everyone, but for me. The police sergeant, I mean, I know that we talked about maybe just doing one. But I think just doing the police sergeant could be a good compromise between all three versus just one. Because I, I do feel it's needed and, and I'll just come out and say that I'm a hard no on any budget without it. And I know I said I was a hard no on the gym and I changed my mind, but I'm not gonna change my mind on this one, like. It's that important to me, I guess, would be my conclusion, is it so important to me that I would do that?
So you're gonna, the, the assistant city attorney, you're not gonna do that?
No, that's our own. So, assistant city attorney and police, so, yeah, that's already, that's in my capids.
That, that's, so you are hiring two new people.
Thank you, Abby, that was awesome.
Sorry, that was wrong, way to go.
And I, and I'm not in charge, I, you may, but. I just, I keep going back to the fact that we're part-time here, like, we, we show up. I mean, you know, when we show up, and we make these like difficult decisions and so. We all sat in this room and interviewed a very capable man in the corner. To become the city manager and to run and function our city. And I think that we all sat in a room and decided we wanted to pay Chief Ober. Additional money to keep him around because we knew how valuable he was and. I don't, I feel like we did that and we do that so that we can. Let them run the city and we trust them to run the city. And when they come to us and say, we need this position. And Jason says, the shooting happened and I have heartache. It's hard for me to say, no, you don't. I do this two hours a week and no, you don't. You know what I mean? Like, I, I know what you need. And so, yeah, I get, like, we're spending other people's money, but at the same time, like taxes. And your taxes increases for the services you provide are based off of the. The population and also the fact that things are going up in price. And that sucks, but we can't keep our prices low while everything goes up, we don't have that luxury. And so I feel like we have to trust. In the people that we've put in charge to tell us what their opinion is. I don't feel like he's saying to us, maybe you could speak for yourself, Jason, but I don't feel like he's saying to us. I could give or take adding a sergeant this year, it's up to you. I think he's saying, I think you need one. And that's a big deal.
Councilman Brad, thank, thank you, I, I. This is a hard thing for me to, to come and propose a budget, it's, it was real money, it's, it's, it's tough, I get it. I'm actually pretty frugal myself, I mean, that's why you see me driving, I've never driven a car that's been any newer than like, I think, eight years or something. I, I just, and that's how I see everything with the city too, that, that we, we run really lean, I think. Like I said, we started with fifteen positions here and. It was a very thoughtful process to get to, you know, these positions and we looked at contracting out the assistant attorney and. We, we went through a very careful process over a period of over a year, really. And with the sergeant as well. So, so when these recommendations come, I completely respect the council's decision and I get where you're coming from. If you said no, I wouldn't come away upset or mad or anything. I mean, I get it. You have a hard decision, but these are. These are really thoughtful recommendations that have come with a lot of discussion with staff, with the department has weighing things out. A, a lot of the stuff, we can't just put on paper like for certain, if you don't do this, this bad thing's gonna happen tomorrow. I mean, right? It's just. And it's, it's kind of a risk mitigation, risk tolerance kind of idea. But looking at everything, I really think this is something that we need to do. And this sergeant position, I mean, I think everyone understands, but this isn't something that just sits behind a desk. They're, they're out helping respond to calls. Um, and it can be, things can turn really ugly. And I forget, everybody loves Raymond, you watch that show. But Robert the Cop, one time, he described police work as like long periods of ultimate boredom with, you know, intermittent, just all hell breaks loose, you know? And that's how it is. Sometimes you get in the middle of the night, a few different things going on and it quickly gets really chaotic. And I think. That's where we, we show from the numbers, from the anecdotal evidence. Um, and thank you, Abby, for bringing up that information. That this is something that I think we're gonna need at some point. I think it's now, um, but I think it's gonna come into play immediately. And it's not just the chaotic calls, but it's the, the quality of service we can provide when somebody calls for assistance that we can have. Not just a couple of young guys on duty at night, but some of its more senior level that can come in and assist on some of those complicated calls. And that's gonna provide an additional level of service, a better level of service that I think residents expect. So I think we get a lot of benefit from this. But again.
So, so if your concern's at night, why can't you make sure there's a sergeant on at night now?
That's, then we'd be taking somebody off of the day to day shift, but.
Um, if you're, that's what you seem to be concerned with. Everybody seems to be concerned with the supervision at night. Well, there's a chief, assistant chief, but Captain Lou Cana that's around in the daytime all the time. So why can't we just have them scheduled a sergeant at night? That's your big concern.
I don't think they're just sitting around during the daytime.
No, they're not.
Well, I know it would be disruptive, the work that they are doing.
Yeah, Mike, I think that's a really good question.
Yeah, no, it's a valid question.
Do you know there are sergeant at night though?
There is a sergeant.
And I'm, and I'm just really struggling with why Officer Three is not capable of supervision. I'm just, I'm really struggling with that.
But Mike, don't you trust Ober to know what, cause that's the thing. Like I called Erickson and I said, hey, can we build? Uh, the fire station, the second fire station and just keep the same people that we have, but put half of them at the west side one. And half of them at the east side one. And when there's a call on the west side, everybody goes, but the east side people show up three minutes later. And vice versa. He's like, no, you can't. And I'm like, why not? That makes sense to me. Like they're just housed at a different spot. He's like, you need thirteen people. At one station to go to a call. And I'm like. Hey, I guess, you know, you're the professional. I have no idea. So. Your question like about the police three, I thought the same thing, but. Seems like he would have thought about that. Like, there's gotta be a reason why he can't do it that way.
Well, how does forty thousand people in one area with, when the cops all go home?
This is Bear Lake you're talking about.
They all go home at midnight.
They actually have a higher crime rate than we do. I looked it up.
And they're pretty seasonal, I think.
Uh, they're about six months a year now. Actual residents of, of Rich County is like four thousand.
Right, exactly.
But they have a population. Cause I went to the fire chief, I didn't, this is in the top of my head. I went to the fire chief and I says, how many people do you think are in this city at one time? And while I was in there, there was the two fish cops that are law enforcement officers. And I said, how many officers take care of this county? Then there's one sheriff and four deputies. And we also help them. When, you know, there's, there's two of us that are law enforcement on, there's three of us total. He says, but we all don't work at the same time. And so he says, and you have a highway patrolman that's around once in a while. He said, that's what covers the entire, from all the way from, in Rich County, the entire county. That covers the whole thing. And the average. Population of that area up there is between forty and sixty thousand. And on some weekends up to a hundred thousand when they have big events, but they'll usually contract some people for that.
There's no way they even, it's not even comparable. They don't have like domestic disturbance, so like.
You think people who are going up there on vacation are not going up there to?
They're up there to have a good time and they're probably not criminals.
I don't know.
Mike, here's my thing. What if there was a small shooting? Would you be comfortable with that amount of coverage up there?
It's what it is.
That's, but that's, those are temporary situations, right? I mean, if they were permanently that high, I'm sure they would be different, but I don't know that it's apples to apples.
Permanently about six months a year.
Didn't you say, didn't you tell me that sometimes they're four to five thousand only? Or did I miss something? You said?
I think the rich county. Population is about four thousand, I think. That's the total, but. Talked to the mayor, their mayor says that they usually have about ninety thousand on the weekends. The fire chief says on an average, there's forty to sixty thousand people. I'm just telling you, that's the coverage. And the only reason I'm doing that is I'm just giving you an example of coverage elsewhere.
Yeah.
What it boils down to, I think, in this circumstances, do you trust? Our police chief and our city manager that are asking us for this? They aren't asking for opinion. They aren't asking, saying we could give or take it. They're saying. We need it.
In our professional opinion.
In our professional opinion.
Well, and, and I really, I did like, I appreciated how. Uh, staff put together the charts to show other cities in Davis County. With the population and with the, the staff size and the ranking of it, because that. That helped lay out. That's, you know, how be, how behind other cities. That doesn't mean it's right or wrong. But how behind other cities we are on different staffing levels for both police and fire. And, and, and attorney. That, that really helped me.
I'll, I'll say without disrespecting, Garden City is not like the model for best practices.
I'm getting it. I'm not. I'm just using them. Oh, please, it's the only place I have legitimate data or at least sat down with a fire chief and sat down with somebody and actively got some. Information rather than just pulling it from a hat because somebody said it down the street, you know? When I went down, I sat down at the table, I actually discussed it.
Yeah, that's good.
Just cool that you did that.
Nate, did you have anything?
Yeah, sorry. Just taking notes.
Okay.
Um, yeah, so. No, just really good arguments all across the board. I agree with every one of you. I think in, in speaking in favor of police sergeant, it's not just about the supervision, but I think having just two officers. Throughout the night is a lot to put on those officers. And I'm also. I think that. Their lives could, you know, potentially be in danger from time to time, depending on the type of call that comes in. What I'm worried about. You know, it seems like increased theft through the night or cars and different things throughout the city. In addition to DUIs and things like that. And so. Yeah, I, I do understand where the chief is coming from, looking at the data, like we absolutely do need. Other individual, I believe, at nighttime, but to Mike's point, I think it's a really good question. Is how flexible is the police department now and why can't they get a little more coverage at nighttime? And I would like to flush that out a little bit more.
We need, we could ask chief that, I guess, or.
Yeah, to your point, John, like absolutely trust chief and professionals, but. This is a very challenging situation. When I look at the increases, I'm like, wow, that's a lot of money each year. Add on power and water and everything else. It's just, you're really putting a lot of burden on the residents.
Well, I.
That sucks.
I was just gonna say, I, burden slash, to Abby's point, if someone told me. Hey, if we had just had, but we didn't wanna, we didn't wanna wreck the boat. I mean. You'd be livid if it's your own family. And it is a what if for sure. It is probably a hypothetical, never happened one after. But if it was. That's pretty impactful. And so a, as a, as a citizen, I think being, you know, gosh, can you have too many? I don't even think you could. But not that we want too many, but I'm just saying, I'm not sure they have.
Yeah, it's called police state.
Well, okay, yeah. And that's, right, we don't want too many. Okay.
But they say oftentimes we only have, like I asked the police guys, or the police guys. I asked a couple of guys, I'm like, how often do we only have two cars? Driving around in our city. And he's like, yeah, lots of the time. I'm like, really?
Well, and we have all these full-time people, but they, they go on vacation, they get sick. I mean, it's not as though they're all working.
They're all supporting the county, they're supporting the school.
Playing for, yeah, it's time for me, the schools. So it, I understand the numbers seem high, but. If we broke it down by their roles, and I truly haven't sat down and said, okay, tell me what A and B and C do, because that's not my job. And it's also not my area of professional expertise. And so like you said, we hire someone, we hire a city manager. I think at some point we do have to trust him. And you know, with Jason, I've, I've sat down a lot and said, okay. What do we need really? He's like, oh, I just, no, I think we should just say no to that. We, we can pause that. He's super conservative. And I really appreciate it because I've said, what do we really need? And Jason has been very good about saying, okay, this is what we actually truly need. This is what we want for sure, but we can put off some of these things. And we can, um, you know, plan ahead for them. And so I've appreciated the really conservative approach, even though I know sometimes. It sounds like it's a big deal, but you know, our city's complicated. Garden City is a beautiful place to vacation in for sure. And it's a really fun place to, to live, but there aren't a lot of people that live here and we don't need, and there are reasons.
I'm not, dude, I don't want to use Garden City. That's not, just.
And, and I, like the mayor there, I'm just, I'm just saying, it is a hard.
Ultimately, Mike, we all, I love it when our council votes. Five to zero for a budget. Like hearing you saying, hey, the other day, it was just like. Nails on a chalkboard because I know, just like it sucks. But I'll also, I'm not telling you what to vote for. I just like.
I can't do it.
I know.
There's no way I can vote a budget that's going to increase thirty percent, fifteen percent in water, ten percent in power. And I feel so guilty about the power because we said, when we did the power originally, we said. Let us do five percent now and we'll do five percent later if we need to. And to me, hitting them five and then ten later is just. Lied to them. I like that.
Mike, I think honestly, it, it's not that we lied to them. I think it's that we didn't represent the actual costs. During, during the course of time, I think we should have said, this is really what it's costing. This is what it's costing, but I mean, operation, you know, budget savings is great, but that's not an operational budget. And I think if we had been better at saying, this is truly our operational costs for the services that we're providing. Um, that would have been helpful in, in really being transparent and communicating the reality of radiation.
Yeah, and on, on the rate hikes. Um, you know, in the meeting we had, we, we talked that we as a city have been subsidizing. In some areas, you know, I think it's worthwhile. I think it's, we owe it to the folks to say, here's what we've been subsidizing the city. We're at a point we can no longer do this. Is that, you know, and to be able to be upfront and we've done this for a long time where we should have raised the rates, we never did. And I don't know if there's a way you can. In, in whatever presentation can be, you know, that's sort of like the show and tell that Josh did, that was very effective.
Go back to my, my car analogy, cause I'm super cheap. Like whenever I go in with the mechanic and they give you that list of like, oh, your steer power string fluid, ten thousand miles over, you should have changed that, you know, you should have done your transmission fluid. And, or you should, you need to change this or that, you know, new, uh, spark plugs. And I'm always the guy like. You know, what happens if I don't do this? And, and usually they'll say, no. You're gonna blow up your transmission or something. Now, well, I'll try to drive another six months and see if that happens. Uh, that's kind of a lot of times my attitude, but I think in our, in our budget, that's kind of where we are. We kind of. Come with these, hey, we need these staffing requests, these staff, or we need to put this much money into the water or power. And we push that off and eventually you go to the mechanic and they're like, you know, and now it's too late now, by the way, it's gonna cost you way more because you damaged this, you know, part of your car. I, I don't think we need to fill a lot of these things because we don't have the resources and I get that. To do a lot of these things that we'd like to do, but I think with the sergeant, uh, with the requests that we've made, I think those are the things that fall in that range of. We should do this, otherwise we're gonna be driving down the road and, you know, we're gonna go off the road or, or something really. It's an insurance policy, but something could, could happen that we're gonna regret. These are, these are the top priorities and, and that's really all I think we can say. Again, we came in with fifteen requests and, and I think we're saying just two. So.
So what's the fourth one though?
Uh, there were initially two sergeant requests.
No, you have the also public works has got to be, that's worth a three.
That's, oh, that's not a new position. What we did there is Josh needs somebody to help with the water. Um, and we eliminated one of the, uh, locator positions and hired a water, water tech. And then we also did the same thing with, uh, we needed a, a meter man in the power department. And we're eliminating Bruce Rigby's position, which will save us money actually by limiting that position and getting the meter man, so.
Where's your rabbit?
Where is your rabbit?
Always pour a rabbit out of your hat.
Rabbits are gone, that's why I'm retiring.
He's like fishing around in the hat. Ah, I gotta retire. Better retire. Have we gotten any new numbers since we, our last meeting, the show on Jenny?
I, I looked for property tax numbers today. They're not available yet. Sales tax hasn't changed.
So we're looking at one, one eighty-nine if we do the gym and the sergeant?
Yes.
What, how much of an increase is that? What percentage?
Gym number will change.
Yeah, thirty-four point nine six.
Increase. Yeah. So right now they're paying like, uh, four, five hundred?
But you gotta remember on a, that's on a six hundred fifty dollar house, you'd be paying about five forty.
Which is like what, yeah, a million dollar houses, million dollar houses are, are listed at six hundred anyway.
But they're taxable and they're.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
But taxable, add about six fifty, seven hundred.
Six hundred fifty thousand dollar taxable amount.
I know. I guess what I'm saying is like, you're, I, maybe I'm misunderstanding. Were you trying to say six hundred? So if your house is worth a million, you'd be paying more?
Y- your house is worth a million, they only tax you at sixty percent.
Six, yeah.
Which is the six hundred fifty, six hundred fifty bucks you'll pay. You were paying five sixty, five fifty, somewhere around there. That's what you were paying. You would be paying seven hundred or more.
Yeah.
Yeah, more than that, be paying about seven fifty.
Yeah.
So on your house, you'll be paying a lot more.
No, no, no. I think mine's probably worth maybe a million, so it's probably six, taxable six.
The number we use when we say on a home that's valued six hundred fifty, is that? The amount that the county values it at for taxation or its actual amount?
Taxation.
That's the taxable value.
Okay, so a million dollar house.
Not the market value.
So we don't use the market value, we use the, okay.
I think it's fifty-five percent, you get a forty.
That's what I was trying to point out. I think, I think that. So if your, so if your home is worth, if your home's market value is seven hundred, most likely it's taxable, four hundred, that number's gonna be low.
So the scenario you were given when you were talking about six hundred fifty thousand, you were basing it off of the taxable amount.
Not market.
Basing it off of the market.
No, we're using market value, six hundred fifty.
Oh, you're using market.
Oh, so you use the market value, okay.
Market value, so that's what I'd say.
But the amount we're using for the increase is the taxable value.
Well, right.
Well.
No, I'm really confused.
So you're using market value to anticipate, no taxable value to anticipate the tax increase.
If increase is based on the taxable value.
Okay, which would be maybe a million dollars at six hundred thousand.
Six hundred fifty thousand dollar market.
Okay. But then the other conversation involved. Market value?
So.
It's really not a conversation because it really comes down to, that's the annual increase someone's gonna have regardless of, you know, if you're, if you're that now.
Either one's tied to six hundred thousand.
That's right. So if some, someone, you know, John, you're gonna see twice that.
You're going off the market value with this. You're not going off of taxable value.
I thought this was taxable value.
I did too.
No, this is marginal. We're using market value, but the numbers are aligned by the taxable value of that market value.
So you're.
Okay, 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 okay.
So, so you're going, uh, so if you're saying a, a house is six hundred fifty thousand, the taxable value of that was probably four hundred thousand.
Okay, and now we have, okay.
And that's what's gonna go up.
This number, yes.
Okay, okay.
So in line, your house is gonna go up. So in line your house is gonna go up a lot more.
You were right, I was wrong, yeah.
Words I hate saying.
Someone like yours as well, Mike, right, because, yeah.
Yeah, it's gonna suck.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, wow, you know, seven dollars a dozen eggs, you know.
Oh, it's only four fifty now.
I got two dozen today for seven.
Has anybody seen how much your insurance has gone up this year?
Yeah, free range.
Help their life or.
All, all those, home insurance, because they're paying for all the fires, I, my house, my house insurance probably went up.
Yeah.
Almost a hundred percent the last two years.
Yeah, that's true.
So, you know, it's it's a combination of all these things, and this is one of those things we do have a little bit of saying, and it's just, I I I try to. I just sit, I'm trying to sit across, picturing the faces of some of these families that are, uh. And and I always, and I've used this scenario before, because it's a million dollar subdivision, or a million and a half, two million, when I. And remember, one of the ward clerks said to me, and I'm sure you've all heard me say this, you have no idea. What people have done to get into this city, to live here, that are a hiccup away from disaster. And, uh, you know, I really have taken that to heart since he told me that.
Mike, I I totally appreciate that comment, but and I think it also demonstrates the fact that people are willing to live here, they wanna live here. It's because it's a nice place to live, we take care of people. Yeah, we take care of people, we listen to them, we've tried to minimize things that we don't want, density, and, you know, we don't have a lot of commercial, and.
So the difference would be fifteen dollars a, a year.
Fifteen seventy-five, yeah. Or a month, right?
Fifteen, fifteen bucks, Mike.
A year.
Just for the while, though.
Sorry, to add the.
To add the.
The service, yeah.
We're also talking about the gym, right?
No, yeah, well, the gym, and the gym, we can, yeah, the gym, we can discuss, we've tabled it until after the review, right?
Okay. Got it, got it, got it.
But let's, if we're discussing the sergeant, let's remember fifteen dollars a year.
Yeah, it's probably good to base it on its own merit as well.
I think so, I think so, I mean, I love Cole, and I know he's not in here to defend it, and I still also love the idea of the gym. But I do think it's important to look at that. Fifteen bucks a year, a dollar, dollar fifty a month, that's less than a slurpee.
Can't invite anyone.
And I know we're adding thirty slurpees, don't get me wrong, I get it, I get it, I'm not trying to marginalize that, but I am also trying to. Like, remind myself that I walk into Maverick and buy two monsters for five dollars.
A day?
Sometimes a day. And and if you're gonna ask people, like, are you okay to spend a dollar more to make sure you have a little bit of extra police coverage? I think most people would say, I'd say. Or a dollar fifty a month. To have more police coverage, I think most people would probably say yes. To a poll.
All right, so where are we at? As far as, is this, is this a discussion that we need some sort of a?
This.
An opinion poll about, I mean, we've passed the tentative which included.
We've already passed.
What did the tentative include to a surgery?
Sergeant, gym.
So this would be a reduction in the tentative potentially, which is good.
Oh, because we'd be dropping the deputy chief.
Oh, that was part of the tentative?
Yeah.
Yeah, this is our.
That's a part of the one forty-three annual increase.
The deputy chief was a, was an increase of, uh, seven plus eleven, eighteen dollars, but that one.
We reduced, okay, so the tentative budget assumed three positions, the deputy fire chief, but it also assumed a seven million dollar gym, so.
That's correct, but the payment, if we go with the, if we go with the twenty-year, the payment's only a dollar difference, so we could keep that somewhat loose.
Right.
Yeah, pretty, pretty.
And that's, and that's sort of hard to really go into until.
And I. I know, and yeah.
Yeah, we haven't committed to that, for sure.
I mean, the Fed could drop the rates, uh, hopefully.
You know, and then raise them too.
Yeah.
I think they'll drop, I really do.
But I think the value of this meeting was for us to hear from everybody. And. Somehow convince Mike, if he told me what to do, I would do it. I don't know, what do you think, Mayor?
What do I think about that?
With the ending of this meeting.
Oh, oh, um, well, really, we've already passed the tentative, we've had a good discussion, which is what everybody wanted, right? An opportunity to really sit down and, this, the, um, library, or the case looked down, we'll do that, I feel to on Friday. So, I mean, as long as we're not doing anything to drastically increase the bottom line, I I think we're still where we started.
So what are, what are?
With a reduction potentially, Mike.
Reduction.
What are different options on on fire? You know, because, um, if. We're putting off. Second station, West Side Station, we put that off the, this, you know, the fourth year of me doing this, we put it off every year. And, um. But with that, we'll come with fully staffed, that's gonna be a really expensive bill. You know, that's, that's one that, and so.
You have to remember, we also lost about six thousand people and a lot of.
I'm I'm not, I'm not, I I got all that, I mean, I understand that, I just, uh. Because I, you know, Mike, I've been in the, my position has been, we should be doing it sooner than later. And, uh, but it's just an expensive bill, when you're looking at. The all the equipment and then all the personnel. And I just go, you know, my son-in-law just made captain up in, up in Salem, which, you know, they talk about, you know, the Salem stuff, and it's all. The one big city in the area, they got like thirteen stations, you know, and, uh. And I, my, you know, why, I almost wonder why we're not working more with the other cities. You know, and, you know, we're all independent in a sense, instead of a conglomeration, because we all support each other. And with that support, with that lower cost or not, I don't, I don't know enough about it, but it's my.
Great, that's a really good point, so we've started, we, I'm talking, me, and Jason, we're talking to other cities. Farmington provides potentially another city, I'm not sure, I'm about looking at a district. Seeing, uh, last year, Jason and I met with, um, Chief Beecraft, who's the North Davis District Chief, to kind of find out pros and cons of districting. Um, still, Jason had some suggestions moving forward, as in terms of how we can look at that, because I think it has merit, I mean. I I would think just overall would save money, but I'm not an expert in that for sure, Jason's seen it cost more money, and so, um, go ahead, I didn't mean to interrupt, go ahead.
Oh, no, I was gonna say, well, uh, yeah, I I've looked at this a couple of times in my career, uh. My first city was a city manager, um, I really wanted to form a district and combine two or three cities, and, uh. You know, it, we ended up hiring a a consultant out of Oregon, actually, E M C I, or E M S C, that, uh. They're kind of an expert in looking at consolidation and modeling and showing you how it would work, and where you'd put your stations, and how much it would cost. And, uh, they came in, and met with our city council after their six-month study and said. In all of our years, all over the country, and looking at these models, this is the best scenario of creating a district, like, it's gonna work so well, it's gonna save you a ton of money. Couldn't sell it, because people, just their little kingdoms, and you you can't overstate, like, how big of a deal it is to local control and giving up, you know? That said, um, everywhere else we've looked at districting, or I have, the districts tend to be more expensive. Um, and for this reason, because, um, you're not really saving on stations or manpower or equipment, because that's all based on population. And I don't know if this is true, I don't know it well enough, but if you talk to Chief Erickson. If we were to form a district with Farmington, it doesn't mean we don't need to build our station on the west side, or Farmington doesn't. The population growth on the west side still requires that's two stations, fully manned, and and equipment and everything be built in west, or Farmington and West Kaseville. Again, I don't know if that's for sure true, but I I believe him. The only place you really save with a district is the upper echelon of, I don't know, administration, so it might save you a couple of positions, maybe. The part, the districts can really go out of control, though, is on the politics, so a lot of these, um, district boards, they're voted in. But they're very tight with the local fire departments, and so the the local control, the rain cost in is often a lot more expensive. At least that's where it was when I was in St. Louis, that was totally the the case, the district tax rates were literally twice as much. Twice as much, not kidding, in some cases, it was seventy-five percent, or twice and a half more than the cities, because they were just. You know, out of control, the wages were.
They didn't have the oversight to keep them in check.
Exactly, they they didn't, they didn't report to anybody, I mean, technically, they reported to the voters, but like, and the voters, they just, oh, we need a new station, or whatever, it's. Public safety, we need this, and so they just voted every time, there's, there wasn't any kind of oversight like you'd get with the mayor and council. That said, I don't know how it operates in Utah, one of the first things I wanted to do here soon is just look at, what are the average. Um, cost per capita in in the districts, like South Davis, North Davis, compared to the municipal fire districts per capita. And if it's like, hey, these are, these guys are operating way cheaper than us, then that's a good reason to say, like. Voters, this is good for Kaseville, we're gonna save money if we go to a district, but if they're not showing that they're operating more efficiently and 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 cost effectively, then it's hard, I think, to sell that. To the council, to the voters, that that's the way we should go. Right, for a selfish reason, I would love to get the monkey off my back, because fire is hard to manage, right? But, um, I think the first thing we should do is look at what are the the costs per capita in the districts versus the cities in Davis County, and I think that'll give us some information. If that's promising, maybe the next step is, let's talk to the other cities, bring in a consultant, and model us out, tell us what it would cost and how it would work. And I think some of that should be looked at before we get too serious about a west side fire station.
Yeah, okay, that that's fair, and, um, I'm gonna retire, so you can hire me as a consultant.
Exactly, there you be so good.
Only if you're cheap.
I'll be cheaper than the one you hired.
Cheaper than a hundred thousand?
Um, okay.
But.
Safety-wise, do you still feel comfortable with where it is? Because I'm more along the lines with Perry, like, I. I get heartburn over this issue, and and wonder, you know, if it's like some of these other things that we've talked about, where. How much further can we kick it down, or can we, and should we be? Doing it sooner.
Are you talking about deputy fire chief?
Uh, fire station.
She's talking about the station.
West Side Fire Station.
Yeah, no, in perfect world, yeah, and we'd we'd build one sooner rather than later, um. I think, I forget, what is it, eighteen percent of our calls are on the west side?
How about on the equator, sir?
Um.
Sydney would do it.
I mean, that, e- every year, we grow more on the west side than the need for, you know, that increases. You know, what's the, what's the magic number where we feel like the risk is too great, and, you know, I don't know, I I feel like, in my mind, um. Wait until we pay off the bonds on some of these buildings, this one, and police station might be a nice time to free up some bonding capacity, but.
I don't know, how the hell are we gonna pay for all of those employees now? I don't know either.
Right, and Chief Erickson has brought this up, and I don't disagree with him, you know, at some point, do we put this on as a geo bond for the station? And let the voters decide, hey, how how important is this, is this to you, is it worth this much money, and I think we'd say, it's the geo bond to pay for the the. Station, but it's also gonna come with the tax increase to pay for that million and a half, or whatever it's gonna be.
It's hard.
Staffing, and and if the residents say, yeah, it's worth it to me, then, there you go.
That'd be really smart, yeah.
Yeah.
So I was gonna say, if it's just a station, like Mike said multiple times, I think we can make that decision, but. The increase that it would cost you, you'd like to have a little bit of buy-in on that, um, and if you could word it.
Yeah.
In the, uh. On the ballot to say that that also increases, could you say something like this will also increase your taxes by some amount to?
You can't on the ballot language.
You can't, you can't.
Yeah.
But don't we have to publish like an official?
Or you could do your voter information pamphlet would include that, but.
Right.
But the ballot language cannot say anything about operations.
Before we got to that point, though, I would really like to to find, see some new data on districting, because I mean, in my little brain, I think, well. How could it not, in theory, save money, so, I mean, you know.
And and yet, I fully understand where his point on, uh, is that it, the fiefdoms and rice bowls are all in one, and.
No, it's, so Farmington's building one down in Station Park, and we're gonna build one out at the, at our substation. But if they were a district, would they have just built one over there somewhere?
Go one, yeah. Yeah. Because you're look, you're looking at the bigger picture, instead of your little.
Layton's probably one on the border, basically, aren't they, so. I'm just worried about over saturation at the end of the day, and how much money is the city worth to have that?
I I would say, I don't think that we have the problem that St. Louis has, because in St. Louis, we we were constantly turning over firefighters to the districts, because they were paying. Twenty thousand more, you know, than we were for every position at least. Um, here, we're not seeing that problem, and I'm aware of, we're not seeing people constantly, you know, getting hired by South Davis or other districts, so. I think they're probably more in line with the cities, I, I don't know if you guys recall, I'm looking at salaries at districts before, but. I think they're they're probably more in line, my guess is they're probably not a lot cheaper than us, but, you know. We'll see.
So are. So is, I don't want to say consensus, but I mean, the feeling I'm hearing, you know, is that. The deputy fire chief is now off the table, and that's what I'm hearing.
Yeah, that's what I'm hearing.
Um, and please correct me if I'm wrong, or if someone feels strongly against that. And it's, uh, the gym and the sergeant that were still mulling. Am I?
I'm trying to correct.
Yeah, I was hearing that potentially the tentative budget could be reduced by at least a position. Um, and we're still pending a decision on.
So after the public hearing, you'll make a recommendation what the what the budget should look like, yeah.
Information in the notice for the public hearing that it includes this gym project, and this is what it costs, this was, what it entails, and so people have an idea of what.
Yeah, and after the filter, you guys decide, yeah.
Yeah. Is every, is everyone planning on coming to that?
I'm not sure.
Next Friday, you have to work day, so obviously, I just look at the schedule.
Well, and if you can't, um, they'll take you on a separate.
Nine AM, right?
Nine AM, yeah.
Do you think I can bring?
Things with.
A pool's out, man.
This is a.
It's a gym.
Yeah. Um, yeah, that's a good point, everyone drive themselves out to Shoreline, um, Junior High, and.
Where where is that? If you could just send me an address or something, or someone.
It's. I think it's in the calendar invite, if you look on the, the thirtieth.
Okay.
I can text you too.
Okay.
But, yeah, we'll send it out, and, um, they made it clear that they'd meet with us one-on-one, or if you wanna take a tour later on, they'd open it up and. Take people out.
Is it on the thirtieth, not this Friday, but?
Friday, the thirtieth, yeah, week from Friday.
Oh, okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, next Friday.
That's more durable for me.
Um, but yeah, meet at Shoreline, Junior High, can I take, I don't know if it's a good way to get there, but you can take Leighton Parkway out.
Yeah, that's what Google Maps is for.
I don't see it. I don't see an address here.
Oh, really? Okay, I didn't do that one, so.
It just.
I was reading it on the address.
Oh, you know what?
We can send out the address.
That would be helpful.
They sent me a calendar invite with the address, but I didn't forward that, I just created my own, just to place the whole in, so, all right, I'll forward the, uh.
That's right, that's why we asked.
Yeah.
Okay, is that, oh, we need you to talk about?
That's what we asked.
I think that's all we're, yeah.
Oh, can I ask something?
No.
Oh, Perry, okay, okay, so, hear me out, we were all concerned about the basics, and especially tripping hazards on our sidewalks, or I feel like we were all concerned about it. How do we feel about, I I hate spending more money, we've already been through this painful process, but what if we took a hundred thousand just from general fund and started applying it towards. Sidewalks, but it's not tax increase, it's just, I don't know, we're starting, I just feel like it'd help us get things off our checklist.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea, if we wanted to.
Sorry, I know, I'm drawing that in at the last second.
You're talking about lifting down and maybe.
Yeah, lifting or grinding down, or.
If you're general funding, you can get fun balance?
Yes, fun balance.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would, I would definitely.
Just start not getting out.
Then we ought to add it for tax increase, and, I mean, I know revenues have slumped.
That's what you use money to save for.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was hoping to add in, I mean, I know we talked about prioritizing it and stuff, but I think it's enough of a priority and enough of a liability that, obviously, we'll do that.
For sure, there's some bad sidewalks, there's some great ones.
Mike, Mike knows where the spot is.
There's aren't even eighty-eight technical in our neighborhood, yeah, everyone walks in the middle of the street.
Yeah, let's do that.
So do you want me to add that?
If it's okay with everyone else?
I'd be okay with it.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Well, after, after the hearing, then we'll have all the additions you wanna make.
Okay, okay.
I'm just making notes.
I'll add that to the list.
Is that something like during the hearing, Abby should make a motion for something like that?
Okay, good, okay. All right, well, then. All right, well, then.
In fact, we'll have a hearing, and then we'll have, uh, maybe a council action item, changes to tentative budget. And then at that point, you can make a suggestion of how the tentative budget changes.
Okay.
Can I say something to the different, not having to do with the budget, or is that against all the rules?
We only, we only.
Talk specific.
Talk specifically about the budget, it depends.
No, it's not budget related, it's policing, uh.
Talk about after we close.
As long as it doesn't require a vote or anything, right, right, doesn't. Okay, so. Great, okay, do we need a motion to close? We didn't have a motion to open, so I guess we just close, okay.
We said, we said Amerie turn off for the court. Take through the chocolate, Amerie.
Uh, I would just.